budget in 2018, which is for one mil. This will be a much needed revenue source to maintain the road infrastructure within the city as gas taxes are also projected to decline. Over time, the city may have to consider other expenditure reductions and possibly changing in staffing levels to achieve a balanced budget. Nevertheless, we remain hopeful that COVID-19 initiated recession will be relatively short-lived and revenues will once again start to increase in subsequent fiscal years. As this process started back in early January, Jane and I requested from departmental heads to request the budget priorities throughout the year. Obviously, COVID-19 hit and we had to request from the department to get heads again where we could make some cuts to help balance our budget. Now on to the general fund to explain that thoroughly. Taxpayer dollars are deposited in the general fund along with state share revenue from sales and use taxes, franchise fees, business license fees, and interest income. The portion of the budget is comprised largely discretionary funds since the city council and manager can allocate those funds to programs and services in any area. In other words, there are few restrictions on how those resources may be allocated. General fund dollars are used to support city services such as public safety, public works, the parks, as well as community development administrative support services. Enterprise funds, often referred to as dedicated funds, are non-discretionary funds including water, sewer, and the marina. Special revenue funds consist of major, local, rubbish, and building department funds as well as the capital improvement fund. Component funds are those of the DDA and the Tifa, and those funds are captured within this and spent within the district. Debt retirement funds has its own dedicated fund for the repayment of debt. Due to COVID-19, projected revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year 2020 below for 2019 were at about 6.4 million, for 2020 were at about 6.6 in the general fund. 2020 taxable values are at a total of about 648 million, representing an increase of 1.9%. This value rose higher than the rate of inflation, which required the rates to be rolled back due to the Headley Amendment. And so you'll note here in your tax rates, and we'll go through those as well as the council, those that did have to be rolled back and such. Health insurance and pension costs are the most significant fringe benefit costs, and to reduce these costs, we took the following measures to reduce these. For pension, we went through and I don't have to list all of them right now, but pension multipliers for employees hired after March 2014 reduced to 2%. Public safety employees hired prior to March 2014 multiplier was reduced from two and a half to two and a quarter. There are 12 of the 31 public safety officers at this multiplier. And just to continue on, all general employees pension multiplier hired after March 2014 is 2%. General employees hired prior to March 2014 multiplier was lowered from two and a half to two, and currently there are 14 of the 36 employees that were hired at the 2% multiplier. Further, a surplus account was established to deposit extra payments over and above the city's annual required contribution payment to be applied to the overall unfunded liability for the city of Gross Point Park. Now move on to OPEB retiree health insurance. As you may recall, as a city council, in January 2020, the council approved the implementation of trust number 115 to set aside funds to fund the unfunded healthcare liability. The city has always maintained a pay-as-you-go program, and Gabriel Roder Smith, who's our retirement consultant, actually affirmed provided analysis to determine the required funding to meet the state funds within the next 30 years. This plan was approved by Michigan Department of Treasury for the OPEB funding for the city of Gross Point Park. Measures that were taken to reduce our unfunded healthcare liability including our dispatch union retiree coverage limited to a two-person contract effective July 2007, EPW retiree coverage reduced to a two-person coverage effective July 2009, administration and non-union employees coverage limited to a two-person in July 2007, all employees hired after March of 14 will not receive retiree healthcare, and all employees hired prior to March of 14 with 30 years of service will receive the retiree healthcare. Now on to major and local street funds. Major and local street funds, Act 51 funding, has been projected at a 10% reduction in anticipated funding received by the state due to COVID-19. The road millage fund tax capture for 2021, which is that one mil I was talking about, is estimated to be approximately 648,000 that will be attributed to major and local roads for the city of Gross Point Park. 490,000 of it will go to major streets, 150 will go to local. Now on to the rubbish fund. The current rubbish contract through GFL, Green for Life expires in June 2021. Rates were increased from $16 per tonne to $31 per tonne, increasing the overall budget for refuse disposal. Part of this was due to actually the Detroit Transfer Station in downtown Detroit we used to take our rubbish to, however, that ended up closing last year, so we had to use alternative methods for disposal, which increased our costs there per tonne. Recycling contracts will be let out for bid after COVID-19 in December. As a city council, you may recall, I've discussed this before, that it was the Gross Points worked together on recycling. However, we're working with a recycling consultant, and due to COVID-19, it was suggested with the market right now, we look to potentially bid this out in December, which might require us to have an extension of this, which we can discuss further. In the building department, this fund represents all building inspections, permanent management, plan review, and consulting services. In the DDA, this represents the business district on Jefferson, capturing taxes that are reinvested into the district. The Tifa, the Tifa district represents the residential and commercial properties from Jefferson to Mac, Weber into Beacons Field. Fund 305, which is the 2007 bond account, the principal interest payment for the bond payment total is 593,000. The rate to be charged on your 2020 tax bill is .9350 per thousand dollars of value. This debt will be paid off in 2027. Fund 306, road millage. The road millage at $1 represents a tax capture of 648,321. Road millage goes to the major and locals for purposes of paving streets, alleys, and parking lots. Fund 307, the construction loan of 2019, the principal and interest payments for the construction loan total 154,000, that is budget for within the capital improvement fund. Water sewer fund, Great Lakes Water Flat Sewer Rate. Water flow rate was increased from $10.34 to $11.04 from Great Lakes Water Authority. They have reduced, however, the volume of flow from 59,500 to 55,500. With a proposed increase of 70 cents in the reduced proposed volume, the costs remain consistent with the current rate. Therefore, the administration's recommending rates remain consistent within the prior year. Now on to the marina. The projected budget is the budget approved by the city council at your March 9 city council meeting. There is $125,800 in wages and fringes that are budgeted for within the Parks and Rec budget. If you don't mind, I'm going to take a drink of water real quick. With that said, I'll ask if the finance director has any further comments or questions.
No, you're doing great.
Anybody else at this time before we dive in?
I just, just a real quick comment, Nick. I think it's helpful to remind, especially for the residents, what the 2007 bond was for and what the 2019 construction loan, what those two items represent.
Yes, oh, thank you, Laurie, that's a, that's a good point. So, the 2007 bond account is actually for a bond that the city took back in those years to buy homes that were in the Gross Point Park. This was at the time of the recession, so we were trying to avoid the tax capture losses, you know, for being off, you know, you know, going to private sale, so the city bought those, that's the 2007. The construction loan 2019 is for the, oh, looks like the mayor's got...
I just wanted to clarify a little bit since I was here in 2007. The 2007 bond, a large share of it was for blight avoidance, which had to do with the home purchases you talked about. There are also other aspects of it at the time that involved, primarily the focus though was blight avoidance that was being caused by the economic downturn. As you said.
Okay, well, thank you, Mayor Danner. And then to comment, the construction loan of 2019 is for the capital improvement of City Hall. Okay. So with that said, I think we'll try and do this, just interesting doing a budget through Zoom, but I will try and hold up the graphs that I'm currently viewing, so you as a council can see at the same time what I'm looking at. So I'm looking at, oh, you can actually see it because I'm in Marquette. The additional pension contributions. Give me one second here. So first, actually, let's start with the annual required state pension contribution, or it's the big blue graph that says pension contribution history. You'll note that in 2003, our history state pension contribution was 153,938. In the year 2020, we are now at 1.8 million dollars for state pension contribution. Yes, Mayor, you got the right one.
In case anybody was trying to figure it out.
Yep, absolutely. And so now I'm going to go to the additional pension contribution chart, which is in the orange that discussed our annual contribution. So, to note, the year 2020, as I just said, 1.8 million is required for our annual required contribution. However, what the city has done to try and bring it down, we tried to allocate additional funds to help bring down that payment. So for the year 2020, that was about $200,000, and last year, we did about $399,000 in additional funds to bring down our pension contribution. Any questions on those? From council? Mayor Danner?
Just one clarification, thinking about the additional pension contributions. What this does is to help reduce our unfunded liability in the program, and therefore puts the pension program in more sound.
Okay. Now, if you could reference by looking at the graph, the state shared revenues, it's in the orange or red, depending on your eyesight, looks like orange to me. You will note that our highest point of state shared revenue in 2001 was 1.4 million dollars from the state approximately. In 2012, we dropped all the way down to $922,000 from state shared revenue. And so that's where it's very important, and the city managers have been working forth with the Michigan Municipal League, consistently working to, you know, discuss with the state ways that we can help increase revenue sharing for cities, which help pay for our services, our, and, you know, such as that. So, that, and for this year, we're going to have about close to, yeah, 1.1, 1,176,845 from the state shared revenue, which is still approximately maybe about 250,000 lower than what it was in 2001. So I just wanted to note of that. Laurie, it looks like you have a question or comment?
I was wondering if you could explain the source of the state shared revenues, how we get that money, what it, what it, what it represents?
How we get that money?
I can, I can do a little historical look at, and you can probably do this as well, Laurie, and correct me if I, if I get this a little bit wrong, but part of the outcome of the, of the Headley Amendment, one of the, one of the, Headley and Prop A together, but at the time, it was to change the, the way that local governments and schools were funded by, by having funds go to the state and then come back to the, to the cities. Now, now, part of that deal was, was the increase in sales tax that the state adopted back in those years from, it was around 4% to about 6%.
Right.
So the, the idea was to, to have that additional money flow to the state, and then the state would be able to reallocate it to local units of government, schools in a more equitable fashion, and that's where the state shared revenue comes, comes from. Laurie, is that close?
Well, I think it's actually constitutionally mandated in the Michigan, yeah.
Yep.
So it's, there's the, there's always an argument about statutorily required shared revenues and discretionary shared revenues, but...
And then one more question, and it's probably premature to ask this, but what sense are you getting in terms of how the, what the states, you know, are they forecasting out several years? Because we saw the dip with the 2008 recession and how long it's taken us to... Are you getting any information yet about that?
Just like everything else, you know, it's on a day-to-day basis, unfortunately. You know, the best we can do is try and predict, especially if I was talking about Act 51 funds and that, try and predict, you know, what could be that percentage we reduce our current budget in next year, so, and that's my answer at this time. Thank you, that was a good question. So now I'm going to go to the budget that is, or the graph that is the general fund cost distribution. So, I'll wait till it looks like everyone's ready, and then, just so you can see, our general fund spread across the city, our biggest expense is our public safety department, which comprises about 7.4 million of the general fund. The next largest is our parks and recreation. And then our third highest would be our public services. One moment, please. Now, I'm going to move on to the property tax value increases graph.
Hey, Nick, I have a quick question. Is this...
Oh, yes.
Is this report available for the public, that we see?
Yeah, yeah, it's on the agenda, it's on the city website.
Okay, good, good.
They can access it under agenda right now.
They should be able to see it. Thank you.
Yep, absolutely, yep. So, at the property tax value increases chart, you will note in 2007, we were at about 620 million dollars. And due to, you know, the recession and everything else, you'll note that after 2007, you could see each and every year, property tax values were decreasing throughout the city, not until about 2015, about 2013, you started to see this rise again. And so if you look as a comparison, 2007 property tax values did not get reached again until 2019. It's almost 12 years later it took to grow from property values in 2007 to 2019 of note. Jane, do you have any further comments too, especially your history regarding property tax values, you know, in the district, in the park?
Well, the value, it was a struggle, the biggest year was 2012, and we just cut back with everything we could to accommodate the shortfall in taxes. But now the values are growing, and it seems to get, be getting better, so that's it.
Thank you, Jane. Mayor Danner?
I just want to have, have clarification, make sure we're looking at this the right way. There's two ways to look at property values, assessed value and taxable value, and I believe that what we're looking at is taxable value, which is different than assessed value, is that correct?
That's correct. Our assessed value at this time is about $820 million, or close to.
Right.
And our taxable value is about 6.
That's important to note, the reason that it's, that it's, that it's taken so long to come back even to where we are today, is that even though our tech, our assessed values, our real estate values in our city have increased dramatically over the years with prosperity of Gross Point Park, the limits of Headley and Prop A that, that limit the amount of increase on a year-to-year basis essentially regulate the, the speed with which you can recover from the depth of, of a recession as we, as we experienced. Another thing that you can see in this chart is that we always, we all think of the recession as really hitting in around 2008 or so. Tax, property values tend to lag, and then therefore property taxes tend to lag what actually happened in, in house values, and that's, and you can see that in the chart. The other thing that I want to point out is that because our assessed values are so much higher than our taxable values today, even if the real estate market goes through a bit of a bump as a result of what we're experiencing today in the economy, that difference between assessed value and property ta, and taxable value, in a sense, gives us, gives us a bit of a budget cushion before you see it impacting the actual tax, tax revenue that we collect for property taxes.
That's correct.
Something that's difficult to sort out in your mind how that works. Now, that's an aggregate statement, it changes, it's different a little bit property to property depending on whether there was a recent sale or there's new construction and so on, but in an aggregate, aggregate basis, as it affects our budget, that's one way to consider it.
Okay. Now I'm going to move, move on to the last graph, which is the general fund revenues, if you could turn your page to that. For the fiscal year 21, you're going to note that it's about 8.6 million in taxes collected. State shared revenues would be about 1,590,000. Rec and service fees would be 529,000. Court fines and fees, 425,000. Miscellaneous, 988,995. And surplus appropriations, which is fund reserves, 160,000 totaling about 11.8 million. Mayor, looks like you got a sun coming in there.
So I do. Turn it a little bit. It's that time of day in your office, sorry.
One moment, please. So the next thing I'm going to dive into for council is the, you'll see is the fiscal year 20, fiscal year 21, revenues, wages, expenses of the areas that we had to look into reducing revenues and or cuts to COVID-19. And the first thing I'll do is, yes, that's the one.
Yep.
And so the first thing I'll note is, you'll see in the top, we're going to start at fiscal year 20, so we're going to work our way from left to right. You know, membership is actually the gym membership fees over there, so we originally budgeted about 180,000 from fiscal year 20, and our current is about 121,000 of our reduced revenues of 58,000. And that's about three and a half month prediction, starting that March 16th with COVID-19, and then that'll be increased obviously with stay home, stay safe, and further as we go into the next budget, as you'll see here. In the fiscal year 21, for example, we still had predicted 180,000 prior to COVID-19, however, what we decided to do is that we see this extending out possibly further where social distancing guidelines may dictate that there may not be some opportunities for gym memberships or theaters and those to operate, or it could be in very small groups of people. So we actually, for example, on that one, we budgeted about $30,000 less, and so we took July and August of the fiscal year to basically account for, this could be a continued case of social distancing, however, this could change depending on, you know, the governor's orders and what else may or may not happen. So that's an example of what Jane and I and Chad, in this case, were looking through to identify where these areas we're seeing the reduced revenues and what can we do and/or is this activity could or could not be allowed in the future. Theater sales is something you'll see as a revenue, we also reduced concession stands, so the popcorn and such, the gym rental of, you know, playing basketball, the city court fines, paying court fees, parking violations, as you've seen, you know, part, we haven't had, it's been nice, if you haven't been, you haven't had to put a quarter in because it's been bagged for a while, ordinance fines, bond costs, recreation building rentals, so the Tompkins Center, sales tax and recreational charges. I do want to note, however, for the council, under sales tax, you'll note that our originally budget, we originally budgeted in '20 about 1.1 million, and through the fiscal year, that's about 982,000. We expect about a 15% reduction this fiscal year to the sales tax, and we also, for next fiscal year, adjusted about a 10% reduction in those sales taxes, so I just wanted the council to know that right there. Any, any questions about that from the council? Hand raised, Laurie?
So, before the COVID, where our, for example, the, the first four items, I, I would generally say those are the Lavine Center items, were we on track with where we were with our budget?
Yes.
Okay, so I mean, the numbers seem to reflect that, okay.
That's correct. Now I'm going to move on to departmental wages for Park and Rec. So you may have noted at, at council, I discussed this, but due to balancing our budget, we did have to unfortunately furlough some employees. About 35 of those had been furloughed through the Park and Rec Department. These are mainly part-time employees, gate guards, concession staff, movies, things of that note. To note, for example, I'm going to go to Recreation, where you'll note the original budget was 287,000, and currently we're at about only 207,000, so we're actually at a reduction of about 80,000. In the Lavine Center, you'll note our original budget was 332, however, at this time right now, it's 225,000 with a reduction of 107,000 than what we had predicted. And you'll note the same as you move over to the fiscal year 21 as well, where we also, as I noted above, we basically took 10/12ths of the fiscal year to account for, let's say, we predict after August 31st, we can assume some general operations and wages, but in the time being, we decided, let's, let's do safe and take July and August, as if they'll be effective as well at the parks. Any questions on that? Seeing none, we're going to move on to expenses of general. You'll note in account 751, the parks, the original budget was 116,000, the fiscal year projected was 89,000, which reduced to about 26,000. Recreation, just note that it was 113,000 for the original budget, and is brought down to 77 with a reduction of 35. And the Lavine Center, it was 261,000 budgeted, and as of right now, it's 169,000. The biggest thing of note I want the council to look at is below under fringe, fringe unemployment, excuse me, prior to COVID-19, we typically only budgeted about $10,000 into unemployment, however, due to COVID-19, at this current time, we're budgeting about 140,000 into, for unemployment. So I wanted to note that. Any questions? Comments? Moving on, okay. For the current year budget, numbers came in less than expected, and what we did is we found below accounts and savings within the general fund and capital improvement fund that we had not spent money on yet, that we could potentially save to help offset those lost revenues. For example, from the city clerk, we're going to have a state reimbursement for presidential primary, computer programmer, that is also a separate line item we used for our other IT, not the email one we are having trouble with, but another one, DASB OPEB actuarial, property tax payments, bank charges, legal matters from the public safety, tests and physicals, repair of the building for the public safety building, repair vehicles, rentals, repair maintenance land, and sick pay wages for the general fund. In the capital improvement fund, we helped save on the staircase to the Lavine's deck... We helped save on the staircase to the Lavin's deck, park and rec picnic tables. Doors at lift stations, those are lift stations for sewer. Lease of our Xerox copier here at city hall. And you'll note the installment purchase contract, principal and interest. That's actually from the city hall capital improvement, so those are money saved. They were budgeted in fiscal year 20. And financing was delayed and we received those, not receiving them until November of 19. The commercial stove at the Tompkins Center was also something we looked at of saving for $10,000. And the electric charger is the electric charging station that we, the city, had budgeted for. With that said, Jane, do you have any additional comments or things that we looked at? Counsel, any questions for you? Okay, with that said. Oh, I did skip one last page, sorry. So for the fiscal year 20, our expected revenue loss was about 498,000. Our expense reduction was about 681,000 for a total of 183. Anticipated budget amendments to fiscal year 20, 100,000 that the city council approved back in March. The MML search for the city manager of 17,000. Trust 115, which the council approved is for 50,000 of OPEB. And liability insurance of 25,000 due to the 2016. Extreme storm event lawsuit to the city of Gross Point Park. Those totaled about 192,000. And so for the entire fiscal year of 20. With reduced revenues and expenses. Our deficit is about $8,680 of the city budget. Jane, any additional comments on this?
No.
Counsel additional, any comments or questions, Laurie?
That liability insurance of 25,000, was that a deductible, is that an increased premium or?
Let me check with Jane real quick, Jane?
That was an increase in premium due to the lawsuit being settled. And so what I did is I budgeted for that same amount this coming year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. With that said. Let me go through the actual budget right here. And I'm, oh, that is difficult to see, I apologize counsel. And. We're going to go through and I'm going to highlight a couple of different areas here. And so what I'm going to do is I'm going to highlight some certain areas for council to take a look at. When I'm done going through there, if you have any questions or comments at the very end, please let me know. You'll note that Department 000, so you'll actually see current property taxes is the first one, that's where I'm at. That was about for 2019, 20, that was about 6.4 million. This year for collecting about 6.6. Communication tax, that is by law, that's where that is of 46,880 in 1920. And our requested budget was 46673. Operational mileage of 2016, that was for public safety, our current mileage rate for that is 264. And one thing to note that the finance director and I were looking at is penalties and interest on taxes. You'll note that in 1920, we received about 11,000. And if you go across, we budgeted zero because we decided to waive those fees for relief due to COVID-19. You'll also note, let's see here, sales and use taxes I discussed. So that is 101 triple zero five seven four oh two zero. On your line item, sales and use tax, that was where I was discussing. This current fiscal year, we're predicting about 15% less. And in the next fiscal year, about 10%. Before I go any further, any questions on those areas or anything in, in the budget? Laurie?
Are you saying?
Michelle?
Are you saying 15% less for the? 2019, 20? And then 10% more or less for the next fiscal year?
That's correct, yes, Councilmember Hodges?
Just a side note, Mr. Seisland, wearing my hat as council member for finance, throughout my months on council, I've been gathering. Various concerns that have been expressed by folks, one of which, Member Rellen, you brought up. Regarding the property tax administration fee that you see in line item 101000447000. There was a concern that, that it should not be a flat fee and you were hopeful that perhaps that could be administered otherwise. I just wanted you to know that we did follow up on that and Finance Director Blayhut did explain that that's not possible to shift how that fee is assessed. Because there's a cap and other regulations that dictate how that's actually administered and with the various property values. We would not, we would not be able to get up to that amount that we need. So I just wanted you to know that we were sensitive to that, we did follow up on it and. Ms. Blayhut may be able to answer that better than I just did, but at least wanted to point that out that that would be a difficult thing for us to do and still get to where we need to get with that number.
Okay, thank you, I'm just, I was, I'll, I'll talk to, I'll follow up with Jane to get a more explanation of what that fee covers. And she mentioned to me that it was a very legitimate cost, I just, I haven't been able to catch up with her, that's my fault, but thank you for explaining that.
Sure.
Okay. Moving on. As I discussed before in our previous line item. You'll note that recreational charges, we had, that is item 101 triple zero six two six oh 90. That for the original budget last year, this current year was 170,000. Our activity is 105 and we're predicting about 142,000. And that's where that comes into that 10 12ths again for the next fiscal year where we took off July and August activities. As our projected budget. And you'll note as well, just below those recreational charges, those areas that I discussed. Membership fees, theater ticket sales, gym rentals and such. Of note too, you will note that. Parking violations, that is 101 triple zero six five five oh 30. Parker, parking violation for your information is about $20 for those that have not had one. Our original budget was 120,000. You'll see that actually our activity, even though we haven't had too much activity of parking violations. Is due to our meter enforcement. They typically, from my experience, have been enforcing a little more in the park. And so that's why you'll see that activity has actually been raised. And you'll note that we budgeted about 130,000 for next fiscal year. To note as well, we're going to look at. Equipment rental, which is 101 triple zero six six seven nine 80. This is, this was budgeted about 225,500. And next fiscal year is 232,000. So part of this, these are rates that MDOT sets. That has preferred rates of different equipment that uses to the different apartments, so that could be to the public service department, to parks and rec, to public works. And those also go to those major and local roads, water, sewer. For those uses. I want to also note 101 triple zero six two six seven six oh two one. Grant reimbursement task force. This is our action task force that we partner with our neighboring city of Detroit and the Gross Points for stolen vehicles. And so with that said, is there any particular questions on line items I've addressed yet? For the council? Seeing none, I'm going to move on to Department 101 of City Council. V-COS, I hope you like this one because for 101, 101 eight eighty oh ten, one, yeah. Community promotion empowerment service awards, we did budget for additional dollars for committees and employee appreciation. Especially considering for our amazing volunteers and staff members that are helping out here. And or the possibility of your century, I think it was century, correct me if I'm wrong.
Century club?
Okay, okay, all right, you, you got me, all right. You'll note too in eight eighty oh thirty, community promotion promo material, that's from our communicator. Conferences and workshops, you'll see below. That price doubled from last year, that's due to the projection that. The Michigan Municipal League is still going to have the Mackinac Conference where that happens every four years and council members typically go, however. We are unsure at this time, so that's why you'll see an increase right there. And below that of note two, consulting fees. In the 1920 budget, we had not anything budgeted, however, this year we budgeted about $50,000. Which will be used for master plan, sustainability or any future consultants seen upon, you know, for the city. With that said, any questions or concerns? Seeing none. I'm going to move on to municipal court. So our municipal court actually houses three full-time employees and an elected judge. To note for the original budget was 155,000. And our requested budget for this year is 152. And if you want to flip to the next page. You'll see we have our probation cost, detention cost, due subscriptions, conferences and workshops. Any questions regarding municipal court? Seeing none, I'll move on. The manager, so you'll see salaries, full-time employees, that is my position with the city. Right below that, assistant to the city manager, that is our new assistant to the city manager, Leah Smith. And also part of her salary is gone into the TIFA. Now I'll move on to public service real quick, so that's Department 173. Salaries of full-time employees. This current fiscal year is about 35,896, activities 16244 and we budgeted just above that 35,000. I do want to note too for council, for future departments, you'll see this, that under fringe benefits, you'll see that the original budget will be high. In this one for public service, you'll see 16,100 and the activity is only 1,785. That's due to that Jane, at the end of the year, does a journal entry and enters in the final number. Just of note, so you'll see those in the following departments as we move forward. Supplies of gas and oil, you might wonder what that is, that's actually a mechanical, so that could be HVAC, heating, cooling, water tank, things for those for public service. Contractual services, WCA, that is our assessing contractual services. So we budgeted 51,500 last year, this current fiscal year. And 53,000 for 2021. I'll get better about that. And then, I think that's about it for public service, any comments or questions? Seeing none, I'm going to move on to elections.
I have a quick question.
Oh, yes, sorry, yep.
Telephone, does that cover the telephone down at the window?
Hmm, I'm glad you brought that up because I have good news, the phones are working.
Oh, wow.
And they have been fixed.
Now they know what needs them, that's awesome.
Calling.
Thank you.
Yes, so. That's what I was told and we haven't heard anything, so, so far, so good, I may, I see you did have a question.
Is, is this indicating that you're getting a raise now?
If the council selects to give me a raise, yes, that is up to the city council.
Okay.
By, by contract, by contract, I should remind everybody that Nick's salary is set on a calendar year basis and this is a fiscal year. So calendar year 2021 is the last six months. Includes the last six months of fiscal year 2021. So if you follow all of that.
Okay. Moving on to elections, Department 191. To note salaries, election workers. Will actually receive reimbursement from the state for about 13,000 due to the presidential primary, so I just wanted to note that. Now we're going to move on to financial administration, Department 201. Salary is a full, oh, sorry, Laurie?
Yeah, I just have some questions on the elections because our, our printing and publishing is, is, does that include the ballots?
I do believe it does, Jane, does that include those?
These costs do include all the printing and publishing with ballots and everything and for the presidential primary, the state's reimbursing us about $13,000. So they're going to be reimbursing us for all of that.
Okay, but the, the budget also includes the upcoming general election as well, correct?
Yes, that would be the 2021 and that would be budgeted for the August and November.
Right, so my question is with. The move to, with extended social distancing and increased absentee balloting. Have we budgeted enough for printing and publishing, including the mailing aspects of that?
I believe we have.
And I want to note too, Laurie, due to social distancing, we are definitely going to be encouraging people more to be filling out their absentee ballots this year.
And if you'll note that this, the, the numbers in the center for activity include two elections, the November election and the March election. So we've budgeted slightly higher than that to account for the August and the November. And if we have to do more absentee ballots, it'll save money in not having to have as many people. At the polling places if possible.
Okay, thank you.
So we should be okay, you're welcome.
Okay, financial administration, so you'll know salaries, full-time employees, that's of city halls, that actually comprises mainly city hall staff, part of their wages. We had budgeted 68,624 and that'll be the same for this requested budget. You'll note two, legal services below that. Part of those costs are for, or actually all of them is for Bodman Attorney, for our city attorney. And for other expenses outside of the city attorney. Property tax payments. Let's see, where else? You'll note we had about 25,000 in 2019, 20, and that has now been reduced to about $5,000. And bank one, annual service fee. We had about 8200 last year, when I say last year, I'm always referring to 1920, so I apologize for those. To 2,000 this year. Just changes to service to reduce fees. With that said, any questions on finance administration? Seeing none, I'm going to move to city clerk. City clerk, you'll know salaries of full-time employees, this is also part of city hall staff that work on elections. And for help out the clerk services, 121,000 for last year. This upcoming year, we're using about 121,411, oh, it looks like Jim's joining on this, hello there.
Glad to be here, thanks Nick.
Yep, yep. And then I did, I wanted to, I noted previously, but I'll note again, you'll see something called computer programmer. We had budgeted about 18,000 the previous year and now only about 5,000. That's because we switched to IT right, who is our main service provider for IT for the city and web mail. Going to have to talk to him about the email troubles that council had tonight, my apologies. Any questions on the clerk? Moving on, we're going to go to public safety now. That's Department 300, public safety, salaries of full-time employees. Last, this fiscal year is about 3.6 million. And that'll be reflected about the same for this next fiscal year. Final payoff at retirement. You'll see that 80,000 was for this current fiscal year. And for next fiscal year, it's about 40,000. That was due to, that high cost was due to, we had two employees retired at the end of fiscal year 19. And flip into your next page, page three of your general operating fund budget. Uniforms, you'll see that the public safety officers, we budgeted 50 Uniforms, you'll see that the public safety officers, uh, we budgeted fifty-seven thousand this year, and in the next fiscal year, about sixty-five thousand. Veterinarian, you'll see those are for services that if there's ever a lost dog, um, and we'll send those over to the vet. Uh, Jane, correct me if I'm wrong, is, is it, uh, Platts Animal Hospital we? I also want to note that, um, you'll look to number, I'm gonna skip all the way down to one oh one three hundred nine forty one hundred, it says rentals. You'll note that it was budgeted for forty-three thousand dollars in nineteen twenty, and we only spent about twelve hundred in that count. Uh, this is actually our next generation nine eleven system we are working on. We had budgeted a higher number, but it seems like, uh, due to, um, uh, bids that the public safety chief's going out for, it's gonna be closer to about fourteen thousand, so you'll notice that fluctuation there. And then also we'll note, uh, right below those, you'll see traffic improvement program, uh, that's for additional signage, paint, um, and areas for safety, uh, you know, for our roads. And there's other areas in the budget too, um, under, uh, public works, uh, that those funds can be used for, for the paint, uh, street signs, um, and other, uh, features. Uh, any questions regarding public safety? Uh, council member Hodges.
I would assume some of the safe routes to school, um, funds would be included in there as well, the grant dollars, are those reflected elsewhere?
Uh, they're gonna be in actually a couple different departments. Some of the, oh, safer off the schools, actually, um, the percentage of safer off the schools, there's certain percentage that the, uh, school district will pay, and then the, um, city will actually pay a portion as well. Those could come from public safety, it could come from public services, public works, and other funds for those uses.
So it is provided for somewhere and recovered?
That's correct, yes. Any other questions regarding public safety? Council member Rayland.
So speaking on that same safe routes, um, with Jefferson, is that gonna fall on us to make any modifications? Because safe routes won't give us any money until probably next summer, correct? We won't get that until twenty twenty-one summer?
Not, yes, you're correct. We won't receive any of those safe route to schools changes probably till next fall. However, what we did do, and I'm gonna go into it, is, um, uh, in the DDA, we actually did budget about twenty thousand dollars for traffic safety improvement, um, just in case, uh, you know, if there's something we can do now, along with the public safety budget and public works, uh, we could look to that Westchester area, um, that has seen those difficulties, and we've been in touch with the county to see if there's something we can do beforehand, because we don't wanna wait all the way till the safe route to schools budget.
Until then, so is that, is that twenty thousand you have tagged for that is specifically just for Westchester and Jefferson area?
Uh, for traffic safety, but as of right now, that's what we're looking into. That's the plan.
Um, sorry, one more question. Do we do any research? The cost of changing the traffic signal or anything, is, is twenty thousand dollars enough to change Jefferson how we need it to?
Uh, you, you said the traffic signal, at, um...
The traffic safety and, and, um, getting a, what's it called, an audit for that area, a proper audit, is twenty thousand?
Okay, so...
Your experience, is that enough money?
Uh, so actually, that's just one part of that fund, so we'll take, it could come, you know, from some funds from the DDA, some funds could come from, uh, public safety, uh, for signage and, uh, that, so it's actually kinda come from different areas. Um, I know you've been a part of those discussions too, uh, with safe route schools, you know, where we're working with, uh, Michigan State to determine, you know, what are those prices, um, and the chief Polonias as well of TIA. And so among those funds, we feel pretty confident we'll be able to get some action taken.
Awesome, thank you very much. And I'll follow up with you after about any specifics. Thank you.
Sounds good, look forward to it. Okay, uh, moving on to public works. Uh, so you're gonna, um, salaries of full-time employees, about thirty-eight thousand six forty-six for nineteen twenty, requested budget about sixty thousand. Um, street and alley lighting, I wanna bring you down to that all the way. Uh, part of that is actually cost to DTE, um, so eighty-five thousands in nineteen twenty, and twenty twenty-one eighty-five thousand, so those are DTE, and you'll see those spread across different funds as well. And let's see, what else of note here? And repair and maintenance of land, um, I'm gonna take the example of DTE doing work, uh, within the city. Uh, so typically DT has been doing, you know, its gas main work within the city, however, if there's an area that hasn't been, uh, to our satisfaction, we will try and take care of that, and we will then try and recoup those costs and bill DTE. Any questions regarding public works? Seeing none, I'm gonna move on to tree maintenance. Uh, for those of you who know Brian Coulter, he is our, uh, city forester. Um, his salaries are about sixty thousand for nineteen twenty, and will reflect the same in twenty twenty-one. Uh, supplies, landscaping trees, uh, we're budgeting about forty-five thousand this fiscal, upcoming fiscal year. Uh, tree trimming, twenty-three thousand, and tree removals, sixty-four. Um, and you'll note as well, we, we kept, uh, the nineteen twenty and twenty-two one, twenty twenty-one budget pretty close to each other, so there's not too many significant changes. Uh, any questions or comments? Council member Reed.
Um, we do loan him to the city of Grist Point, is that correct? And so, uh, they pay a portion of the salary? Is that how that works?
That is correct. Yes, thank you, thank you, yes. Um, now I'm gonna move on to, uh, parks. Uh, salaries, you'll note, as we kinda discussed before, uh, so you'll see some reductions from the original budget to the requested budget. Full-time, that was about a hundred seventy-five thousand, requested one twenty-five. Uh, salaries, employees, um, you're gonna note, uh, two hundred forty-seven thousand down to one ninety-nine. Uh, fee costs, you already addressed telephone working, that is part of parks, I see that in here. And I do want to note at the bottom, dog park supplies. If and when we can open up some areas, uh, of our parks and the dog park can be built, we did wanna budget into there about seven thousand five hundred dollars, um, for dog park supply, so whether that's, uh, waste bags, uh, water, uh, receptacles. So we'll go in there real quick, and if you turn your page to seven five six, recreation. Uh, salaries of full-time employees, those are gonna be about roughly the same, ninety-five thousand nineteen twenty, ninety-eight thousand in twenty twenty-one. Uh, annual Rec Pro Renewal SSL certificate, that's for the online Rec Pro, um, for signing up for online classes. And, uh, I want you to go to the very bottom of recreation, you'll see electronic scoring board, uh, that is a newly budgeted item next year, a request from Chad, uh, that'll go into the gym of the eleventh center. Any questions regarding recreation? Uh, council member Fluid.
So I'm looking at the, um, salaries for temporary employees, and there's quite a, quite a big cut there. Are we projecting at this point that some of the people who have been furloughed will not be coming back?
Uh, at this time, uh, you know, this is a situation, we're kinda waiting on from the state to see if we can open up a little more. However, if, uh, you know, everything gets back to normal fairly soon, we do anticipate we'll be able to bring a majority, if not all, of those back. But, you know, this is gonna be a situation we'll have to evaluate as this continues on.
Does that include, um, lifeguards in that amount?
Uh, that does include lifeguards, uh, potentially. Um, one of the challenges, uh, with this is that, um, the gross points amongst ourselves and the city managers and park directors, uh, we have been discussing that there could be the possibility of a, uh, pools may not be able to open. And so that is something, uh, we're continually evaluating every day at this point, so, yes, I'm, I'm glad you pointed that out, council member Fluid, I should've noted that, but a lot of significant expense is for, um, of both temporary employees is the lifeguards, uh, the other gate guards and duties, and, um, you know, those challenges.
Okay.
Um, one more question, are we adding insurance? If we do open a dog park, is there any budget for insurance for the dog park? Do we need to cover any kind of liability?
Uh, I'm gonna ask, uh, uh, Kirk, uh, Finance Director Blahout, where would that be in which part of the budget for dog park?
We just have the dog park supplies for seventy-five hundred, the liability insurance in state.
Okay. That would just be liability insurance for the city. Uh, Mayor Denner, looks like you had a question in general.
Well, I was gonna, I was gonna answer, actually answer, uh, the way that Jane just did, uh, the, uh, the city has a liability policy that covers all the activities of the city, so that the, the activities can change within the context of normal operation within our parks and so on, and it doesn't typically affect our, uh, insurance costs unless we have some claims issues or something like that that, uh, might affect it down the road.
Uh, moving on, we're gonna go to the eleventh fitness center. Uh, for salaries, temporary employees, you'll note nineteen twenty is about a hundred seventy-six thousand, that has been reduced down to a hundred forty-one thousand. Um, moving down to movie rental fees, you'll see that there is a hundred twenty-eight thousand budgeted nineteen twenty, that's been reduced to a hundred ten thousand. Uh, concession supply, stand supplies, you know, for popcorn, chips, uh, pop and that, that was at fifty-two thousand, and that's been reduced to thirty-six thousand five hundred. And then I'm gonna scroll down all the way to the end. Uh, refunds, parks and rec programs, that's where Chad, Craig, and Chris Dalmage have been working with, uh, uh, families on refunds, uh, for park and rec programs that they may have missed or crediting. And, uh, any questions regarding the eleventh center? Uh, council member Reed.
Yeah, so far those refunds were primarily for the daddy-daughter dance and the marshmallow drop, is that correct?
You are correct, yes. Uh, moving down to, it's just below seven sixty, eleventh center, supplies, uh, planning, that's, uh, for our gardening staff, uh, you'll note that those, uh, uh, budgeted are, uh, about the same. Uh, moving down real quick, you're gonna see Department eight fifty. Uh, so first line item is health insurance. Uh, you're gonna note that it was about one point eight, uh, millions sixty thousand seven hundred, and that's been reduced to one point eight thirty-two thousand. And actually, who administers our health insurance, uh, is, uh, Manquinn Vance, along with the other gross points, uh, there are, um, they help consult with us. Um, let me scroll down to, uh, retirement. Uh, the city share was about one point nine million in nineteen twenty, that has now been raised to about two million. And part of that, um, you'll see, our annual required contribution for pension was about one point eight. Why it says two hundred thou, I mean, two million in there is because we added about two hundred thousand into extra contribution into that. Uh, you're gonna note as well, uh, social security tax, you'll see that three hundred ten thousand was budgeted nineteen twenty, and you've seen no activity yet at this time. That's due to the journal entry will be entered in closer to the end of the fiscal year. Uh, healthcare savings program, uh, you're gonna note, um, that this was, uh, twenty-seven thousand for this year, this past year, and about thirty-eight, so a slight increase. Uh, part of this program was anyone hired after two thousand fourteen, uh, receives no longer retiree healthcare and is two percent of, uh, for example, my salary. Uh, Trun, Trust One Fifteen Olk Peab, uh, this was part of that, um, discussion we had as a council, uh, for helping out, uh, after thirty years, uh, for our, uh, healthcare. Any questions regarding, uh, Department eight fifty? Moving on. Give me one second here. Now we're gonna go back to the graphs real quick, so, sorry about this. And I would first like to take your attention over to the major street resurfacing graph. To note, uh, our current, uh, street millage is about one mil for ten years, which, uh, produces about six hundred forty-eight thousand for this upcoming fiscal year. And you'll note down your left-hand side, you'll see those costs, um, that we did for major street resurfacing. Uh, major streets accounts for about eleven miles within the city. Uh, this would be areas like Saint Paul, uh, Essex, um, Charlevoix, uh, those are considered major streets. Uh, Mayor Denner.
Can I comment on that just a little bit? Uh, you see the big jump there, so that, so as Nick pointed out, the major streets are mainly our cross streets, our bigger cross streets, as opposed to our, uh, we put it, myself, the central streets. Um, the millage, the previous millage that expired, uh, the way it was worded was limited to our residential streets, so we weren't able to spend much, any money from that on our, our major cross streets. The, uh, the renewal that was at a, which, that was approved is at a lower millage level, as Nick pointed out, pointed out, it's at one mil. But the language is broader to allow us to, uh, to, uh, spend that road money on the major streets as well as local streets, as well as alleys. So that's why you see our ability to jump the investment in our cross streets going forward.
I also wanted to note two curbs in parking lots. Um, now I'd like to turn your attention to the local street resurfacing graph. And so you'll note, uh, for the, um, year twenty twenty, uh, the city of Grist Point Park spent about one point two million, um, in roads. A lot of these ro, uh, dollars come from Act fifty-one funds from the state and from our, um, road millage of one mil. Uh, the city has recently been working with its engineer, OHM advisors, on a Paser rating system, which has identified, uh, the streets, uh, most at need of, um, road resurfacing. And so we are, the city and OHM are working on this right now to evaluate upcoming streets, uh, for resurfacing, uh, for this year.
Nick, question, Nick?
Yes, councilor Robson.
Uh, where does the, uh, resurfacing of the alleys in the northwest sector fall in all of this, in the big picture?
Uh, th- these are definitely an area we do need to look into. The Paser rating system, uh, actually only addresses, uh, roads. It does not address alleys, which I, uh, was surprised, so, uh, our public works department, uh, has actually been going through, um, in, into those alleys and identifying, um, areas that are in most need of improvement. So if you're asking, are you, if you're asking for a specific alley at this time, I don't, I don't have that at this time.
No, not specific alley, it's what I, I mean...
Oh, sorry.
Is the repaving of the alleys in the works, I guess, under the current...
Yes, they are, they are needed. Council member Reed.
Yeah, wasn't that included in our bond? Alleys?
Yes, they are, yes, in the road, in the one mil, uh, roads, alleys were included as well. Any other questions or comments? And so, um, now I would like to turn your attention over to, um, the rubbish, garbage and rubbish collection, which is Fund two-two-six. And if you'll pull up that graph. Uh, council member Rayland.
Yeah, I apologize, I should've asked this a minute ago. I was thinking, um, so last year we had, we had a schedule... Yeah, I apologize. I should have asked this a minute ago. I was thinking, um, so last year we had, we had a schedule out for the road repairs and all that. Or do you know when that's gonna come out for this year? Is it gonna be similar?
A schedule?
Yeah, we had, we were able to tell residents what streets we were working on so they could address issues that they saw that weren't being addressed, just so we all know where we're going to catch up on the road.
Uh, we're currently working with, uh, O H M advisors on that schedule right now, and that'll be posted on the city website when available.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep, absolutely. So you'll note, um, in our refuse recycling budget on the graph, uh, collections, um, went from four thirty-five to four hundred one thousand to four hundred forty-four thousand. Disposal went from one eighty-five to one ninety to two thirty-five. Uh, part of these costs were associated with, uh, you'll see that jump from twenty to twenty-one due to the shutdown of Detroit Trans, uh, Transfer Station. And so we had to use alternative sources, uh, for disposal. And specifically have noticed council, we have discussed, um, you will note in the year twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, an increase from a hundred forty-two thousand in recycling to two hundred twenty-six thousand. And that was due to that increase due to Green for Life. And as I discussed before, uh, the Gross Points have been working together with a recycling consultant. Uh, unfortunately, due to COVID nineteen in the market, they, uh, they let us know that it would probably be best that we looked to bid out later in this year, uh, closer to December. Any questions regarding this graph? Uh, Councilmember Fluid.
So just to clarify what you were just saying, this is something that we might work together with the other Gross Points to see if we can, can get a better bid on these things when the time does come to bid, correct?
That is correct, yes. That's, we all collectively talked amongst ourselves, I mean, together, and R R S, and that is our intention.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. Any other, uh, comments or questions? Uh, let me see here. I do, oh, I do wanna know in the actual budget for garbage and rubbish collection as a cost savings measure, uh, the city, uh, there was a public works vehicle that had been budgeted in nineteen twenty for about fifty-two thousand. And, uh, due to the costs of, uh, the recycling, um, we actually, um, you know, used some of those funds to help pay off, uh, some of these, uh, recycling fees. I just wanted you to note that. And, um, our rubbish, uh, rate, uh, for the city was rolled back to a dollar sixty-one from a dollar sixty-three. Any questions regarding that? Seeing none. I am gonna move on to the Building Inspection Department next. Um, uh, to note, uh, you'll see, uh, building permits, uh, originally budgeted a hundred thirty-two thousand in nineteen twenty. Activity was seventy-eight thousand as of this year. And, uh, we're still anticipating about a hundred thirty-two thousand in the next year. Um, the city has been operating in, uh, while Co, while COVID nineteen has been evolving and what's been allowed, uh, the city had been doing virtual inspections and or conditional, um, you know, occupancy upon when we could then co, go to a home and or inspect. And in other cases, there were, uh, still, uh, some activity going on, uh, for extreme circumstances where if a home needed a bathroom to be done, a kitchen to be done, essential services for those homeowners. So there still was some activity, uh, done, you know, during stay home, stay safe. And that just actually lifted today for construction services. So, uh, you will, we will note that, um, our building inspector, our electrical inspector, our, um, inspector pre-sales could officially start working today again on a more, uh, on a longer level. However, they are wearing, uh, P P E equipment, um, and working with the homeowners, uh, addressing, um, you know, any concerns that they may have. Uh, but we're really moving to a virtual, uh, building department, uh, which has been certainly interesting using a lot of, uh, FaceTime that, uh, maybe some of our building inspectors have never used before, and, uh, it's working out quite well. I also do want to note for council that occupancy permits, you'll note that nineteen twenty was forty-five thousand. And you're gonna see increases almost double to eighty thousand. That's due to it's about every two years, um, that cycle goes where there's more homes, uh, going through that occupancy process. Moving down, you're gonna see inspection services, uh, slash wages. Uh, oh, Mayor Dennis.
Commissioner?
Yes.
Um, just to clarify, clarify that, it's, it's, uh, it's the rental, uh, housing, uh, it's the rental stock that, uh, has a required cycle on the, uh, occupancy which causes it to spike.
Thank you for that clarification.
It's not, it's not the, uh, owner occupied, it's the, uh, it's, it's the rental, uh, properties. And, uh, several years ago, a number of years ago, and Council, uh, Mayor for Tim Robson will remember this, we tightened up, tightened up our rules on, uh, uh, inspection to make sure that we maintain the quality of, uh, of our rental stock in terms of the maintenance and so on. Just the way it works out, about every two years you see a spike commence.
Thank you. Uh, moving to that Department Three Seven One, uh, you're gonna see inspection services wages. Uh, part of those wages is with our, uh, building inspector, our electrical inspector and, uh, other city employees that are working with the building department. Uh, you will see that fringe benefits directly below our original budget was in nineteen twenty was sixty-three thousand. And there's been nothing budgeted this year. That's actually just a budget oversight, just so to note there. And inspector, pre-sale and rentals, uh, that would be as Mayor Dennis just talked about for our rental inspections. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Reed.
Yes, so you're, you're saying the, the fringe benefits are missing under Three Seven Three Point Zero Three Zero?
Um, I'll have clerk, I mean, um, Finance Director Blahout to explain.
You know, I budgeted sixty-three thousand in the Three Seven Three O Three account when it, we changed the number to seven nineteen. So I budgeted it twice. Yeah, so the sixty-three won't be used at all.
Okay, so it's the seventy-one thousand, seventy dollars is the budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct. Okay.
Any further comments or questions? Um, then to move to, I must have skipped ahead. I'm, I apologize for that. But, um, we'll move to the Building Department Revenue Distribution, uh, that graph. And you'll just, uh, take a look there. I, I, uh, I think I discussed all. Just wonder, make sure everyone saw that. And then I'm gonna move to Building, uh, Department Expenditure Distribution. Um, and we discussed those same areas as well. I just wanna make sure you're all seeing it. Okay, now let's move on to the Downtown Development Authority. So if you go to the graph, let's go to the, uh, let's do, sorry, mine's a little out of order. Uh, it's D D A Authority Collections. So you'll note it's in orange. Um, in two thousand eleven, the D D A collected about a hundred twenty-five thousand. In the year twenty twenty, the D D A collected about a hundred six thousand fifty-five. Moving on to D D A expenditure chart. Uh, the D D A expenditures for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, uh, salaries admin is about six thousand. Jefferson Traffic Services, uh, V C O S, that's like we discussed with, um, uh, safety improvements, so that twenty thousand. Legal Services, that's for, uh, uh, Bodman. Uh, Ground Maintenance, uh, that would be for Southern Gardener or contractor that works on the, uh, traffic islands. And you'll note to the District Site Improvements, uh, of a hundred twenty thousand dollars. That is for the parking, proposed parking lot, uh, in front of the library and site clearing of the Public Works Department. That total for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, and this graph shows a hundred ninety-one thousand. Any comments or questions regarding those graphs before we move to the budget line ends? Okay, moving.
Question?
Oh, yes.
So you, yes, the parking lot in front of the library and the clearing, is that tied directly to the Art Center? The donor supplied project?
You're talking the, the site clearing or the parking lot?
Parking lot and the site clearing.
So the site clearing is for, uh, once the, uh, Public Works Building over on Mac Avenue gets finished. And once that's done, uh, then the, the building's fully occupied, it's finished, then the Public Works Building, uh, will be demolished.
Okay, that makes sense. And then?
Yep.
The park, the parking lot, is that, that's strictly for the Art Center, correct?
Uh, also for City Hall and the Public Library.
Okay, well, we'll touch base on that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, as well, um, we're gonna go to the actual budget. I did note the salary, um, of six thousand dollars. Uh, Traffic Services, twenty thousand, Legal Services of Bodman, Southern Gardener, uh, District Capital Improvements. Um, I do wanna note, uh, the activity, you'll see a hundred thousand dollars when only about fifty-one thousand was budgeted. Uh, this was due to the permit for the bus turnaround, uh, from Wayne County, uh, Legal Services. And, um, I mentioned the bus turnaround, yes. Any questions or comments, uh, regarding the D D A? Uh, Councilmember Rayland.
So you mentioned the fifty-one thousand for, was for the bus turnaround, correct? And then that was budgeted. Did it turn out to be a hundred thousand? Is that what this is saying?
That's what this activity is showing, yes. So we had originally budgeted fifty-one. The activity was a hundred thousand within that department.
Okay, and that should be tied to the.
That lineup.
Because that was a vote for the Art Center. So just to keep note for all the residents, that's another fifty thousand on that, on that part. So we should note that down somewhere that all the extra money that we're spending, that we're saying is donor funded, is actually coming out of our budget, our taxpayer money. So I'm, I'm, I'll make a note of that. I'll make these notes and share them later. But just, I think we need to be more transparent about that rather than just hiding it into a budget. Does anyone else have anything to say on that?
I agree.
It looked like Councilmember Fluid had a comment or question.
Um, yeah, I, because, Councilmember Rayland, I, I agree. I would like to keep track of those costs as well. Um, I also had a question about the eighty thousand dollar surplus appropriation. Um, where is that coming from?
Fund reserves.
Out of the.
Fund reserves of the D D A.
Of the D D A?
No, of the D D A.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, um, so the legal services budget in the general fund was a hundred thousand dollars. And then there's twenty thousand in the D D A fund. And I know that our, um, retainer agreement with Bodman is ten thousand dollars a month, which, which comes out to a hundred twenty thousand. So is this, is, is this twenty thousand for the D D A and legal services out of our Bodman retainer?
Uh, you know what? Let me check real quick the, uh, Finance Director Blahout, but I do not believe so. Um, Jane?
Yes, the hundred thousand budgeted in the general fund, Bodman's retainer is eighty thousand. We have fifty thousand budgeted in the Public Safety Department for the prosecuting fees. We just budget a hundred thousand in the general fund in case there are extra fees related to general issues. The D D A and the T I F A also have Bodman fees budgeted, but it's paid for by the D D A and the T I F A. Did they answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, Councilmember Fluid.
Did the D D A Board have a, have an opportunity to meet on this and discuss this? Do you know?
Regarding this budget?
Yes.
Yes, so actually the D D A Director, um, uh, he had met, um, months prior. And, uh, he had been polling around the D D A members, uh, to discuss, um, you know, what are the areas you see need fit for the D D A? And due to COVID nineteen, uh, they weren't able to meet. And so, um, they have not met since months prior, uh, at that time. But yes, they have discussed the budget.
Okay, so they all discussed the budget, but not in an actual meeting?
They, they had polled, they had polled, the D D A Director, uh, had polled, uh, the members uh, regarding areas in activity they see that they should have into the twenty twenty-one budget.
Okay, thanks.
Any other, uh, comments or questions? It looks like Councilmember Rayland.
Yeah, so back to the, the parking lot we were talking about. Um, did we do a study on how many spots we actually need for City Hall and the library? Do we need an improved, do we need a full lot just to add spots for the library and City Hall? That doesn't seem correct. There's my second. You know, is it how, because we, we've had the same lot for so many years, it doesn't seem like we need more spots for City Hall or the, for the library. And from what, from what?
Uh, so the.
It sounded like that was for City Hall and, and the library, right?
And so the question was, have we done, excuse me, has a study been done about the parking spaces needed? Is that the question?
Yeah, you mentioned that the, the new parking lot in front of the library would be for the City Hall and for the library. But it, has it been proven that we need more spots is what I'm asking? Where did, where does that information come from that we need a parking lot in front of the library for City Hall and library? This is what I'm asking.
I see, okay.
Yeah, if you don't have an answer, that's okay, but I'm, I'm wondering why we.
Yeah, not this time. I'd have to, I'd have to follow back with you, and I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, yeah, because I'm wondering why we need to lose that big plot of green land if we already have enough spots for this many years? We haven't changed anything. There's no more capacity happening anywhere. Thanks.
I'll make note of that V C O S and definitely, uh, get back with you.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
City Manager?
Uh, yes, Mayor Denner.
Um, I would agree that there hasn't been a formal study done on that. It's, the observations as it relates to City Hall and library are really anecdotal, uh, based on, uh, recommendations. The, um, City Hall tends to, to max out, um, only at certain times, uh, meetings, um, court days, uh, that sort of thing. Uh, court days particularly are in conflict with the library use of the lot. The, uh, library has talked to us about continuing to expand their programming and attract more people to the library. And that would put, and they were, uh, interested in greater capacity. But that hasn't been quantified specifically in a study, uh, as you said. So it's really been qualitative, uh, more so than quantitative at this point.
Thank you. Thanks for explaining that. Would, would something like that come to council for a vote? To expend that expenditures or is this budget saying that we can go ahead, they have the free will to spend it on a parking lot?
Uh, you know what? That is something I'm gonna have to follow up with the mayor and the, uh, city attorney.
Once, once we have the, once we've approved the total budget, uh, the D D A has responsibility for the specifics to their budget. And so the, uh, specific, uh, expenditures would be approved by, um, one authority board. You know, after appropriate bidding and so on and so forth.
Okay, so they would have free will to do that then, is what we're saying, once.
Right, as a separate authority, once we've approved the overall budget, then, uh, as a separate authority, they can, uh, they, they can, it's a civic decision.
All right.
Uh, Councilmember Fluid.
Regarding the need for that parking lot, so supposedly there is a, um, I don't remember the exact title of the study, but it was. I don't remember the exact title of the study, but it was, there was a master parking plan that is attached to the Art Center project. So if this parking lot is going to be part of the Art Center project, and this master parking plan has already been developed, can we see that as part of approving this 120,000 in their budget for that parking lot? Is that, is that plan available so that we can see it?
My understanding, and the mayor can correct me, but I believe that will be presented at the Planning Commission meeting. Mayor Denner, do you have a comment?
The, the parking plan you're speaking about is looking at the adequacy of parking in the area to support the proposed Art Center. So that plan is being refined as part of the design process that's going on right now. And that refined plan will be a part of the presentation to the Planning Commission about operating plans for the Art Center. The, the other thing I'd point out is that this is true really across the city. Most, all of our public parking areas, whether they're in commercial districts or, or around City Hall, serve multiple purposes. And in fact, in, in case of business districts, we often look at the balance of need between businesses that require a peak during the day versus businesses that require a peak during the evening. So we have very, we don't, we have very few, in case of public parking, we have very few of what you might think of as dedicated parking to do any particular function, it tends to be multi-purpose.
Okay, so we're not gonna see this plan prior to voting on the budget, is what, is what you're saying?
It's just, it's just not available in a form that is useful to review at this point.
Okay.
So if, if we disagree with this, what's our steps to modify that? Since we're not voting on anything today, but we'd like to see it amended, how do we go about that? What would you suggest? Since we're reviewing this as a council, we wanna adjust, is there the ability to adjust anything? To say that this is too much? Without a, without a, without any kind of survey or anything? Is there a way to?
Can I, can I make a suggestion, which is that assuming that everything goes forward and they are planning to start construction on the Art Center next year, does this have to be in the budget for this year? If, can we wait until we have that parking study and we have all that information before we allocate this money?
Keep in mind that the budget we're talking about here is from, for July of 2020 through the end of June in 2021. So it actually does include activity that's gonna happen in the next calendar year.
I understand.
But then back to my question, obviously, we don't think that that's legitimate. So how do we go about changing that? Or offering a suggestion to change?
In term.
I don't think it's a legitimate budgeted expense, is what I'm saying.
I understand.
And especially since we, we did do a budget of 50,000 and we were off by 100% for our turnaround, which cost us 100 grand. How do we know this 120 is actually right? I don't.
Is this a question for?
Yes. Yeah.
Um. I suppose so, I mean, I guess my interpretation of it would be, the process is we're having this budget discussion now. The budget is being voted on at Monday's meeting, is that correct?
That's correct. After the public hearing, after the public hearing.
After the public hearing, right, so, you know, I suppose there could be additional, as long as it doesn't violate the OMA discussion on budget issues. But, you know, as far as the projection goes, that's part of what this budget is, is budget projections. The Downtown Development Authority is a separate authority. You know, this is what they have suggested and proposed, and that's, you know, what, what, what it is that you as a council are evaluating is their proposal.
So to be, just to be clear, if we don't like the 120,000 allocated for this parking lot, or if we don't feel comfortable voting for it because, because we don't think it's enough, or we don't think it's necessary this year, for whatever reason, we have to vote no on the entire budget?
I, I would have to look more closely at some other line item opportunity, but I, you know, there's also, I think, as far as I understand, you know, this is part of the process we're going through right now, is room for a discussion on the budget. But I guess, I, I guess maybe I don't understand your question. Is the question that if you vote yes on Monday, is there some mechanism to go back and fix that line item amount? That, that I'm not 100% sure of, I would have to look at, but I think once the budget is approved, as the mayor said, that, that then goes back into the authority of the Downtown Development Authority to manage their budget and, and spend it with their discretion.
Okay, so this, this should have been some information that we were given before today about their budget. And we were given no information about their budget, where they came up with this $120,000 for a parking lot. Or, or a reason to have a parking lot for specifically, you mentioned City Hall and, and the library. Correct? Is that correct, Jake?
I think you just, you, you referred to the 120,000 for the parking lot, it's really for all the DDA physical improvements. The 120,000. A portion of that is intended for the parking lot per what the DDA intends to do.
Okay, and that's.
Insight clearing of Public Works.
So.
Councilmember Reed.
So if I'm hearing correctly, the DDA was not able to meet because of the COVID, and they weren't able to have a virtual or otherwise open public meeting, so their budget was presented in lieu of a meeting, is that, is that correct?
No, and that's something I can follow up with the DDA Director, but no.
That's not correct. I, I think that's what I'm hearing, the concern is, there wasn't a public meeting on this budget by the Downtown Development Authority because they couldn't meet at least in person. I thought that's what you said, so they polled the board members to come up with the budget.
Or they left it up to the administrator?
Well.
We don't have any proof that.
To a point, if you look, if you look back through the minutes of the DDA, each of the items that they're, that they're proposing have been discussed at by the DDA, but it wasn't discussed in the context of, of an amalgamated budget in a formal sense. But each of the items that they intend to pursue have been discussed at the DDA in live, in, in, in person meetings. Just the final amalgamation of the budget was not able to be done.
Or presented. A final budget wasn't presented either then, correct?
Sorry, can you repeat that?
The final budget wasn't presented then either, correct, is what we're saying? Yes, it was talked about.
Each, each of the items were talked about, the budget, the budget each year tends to, you know, that it's, what it is, is they look for the best and the highest application of the fees of the tax recapture. So the revenue stream is fixed, their responsibility is to apply that revenue stream to the best of their ability to the, for the benefit of the district that they're responsible for. And so each of the items that we're talking about here were discussed as items to be included in the budget. But the, and, and what they're, what they're trying to do is apply the, the tax recapture in as productive a way as they, as the DDA Board feels they can for the benefit of the district.
So for legal processes, do they have to present a budget and vote on it before they present it to us? And this seems like it's being presented to us as something that they voted on. But I'm not hearing that anyway.
Yeah, yeah, well, ideally, they would have had that meeting and formal, and, and, and done the amount, the complete line-by-line budget, which they'll have to do in a, in a, in a meeting soon to confirm, you know, their line-by-line, line-by-line budget.
So are we okay as a council to say yes, go ahead and do that, or are we not being fiduciary, you know?
Yeah, we don't have a lot of. The unusual circumstances that we have at the moment because of the pandemic have thrown off our process a little bit. And we're trying to do the best we can to.
So if I, Mayor, Mayor, if I may, Mayor?
Yes. The 120,000, it's being asked about. It can be adjusted throughout the year, right, like we do all the time with, with other budgetary items, is that correct? If it's too much or it's too little, they can come back and, and make that adjustment, is that correct, Nick? Nick, can you hear me?
I can hear somebody in the background.
Yeah, see, what did you say?
All right, this 120,000. It can be adjusted going forward, can it not, to a lesser amount?
Yes, yes, it could.
Sorry.
Yeah, the budget doesn't guarantee it's gonna be spent.
Right.
There are guidelines for going forward.
Yeah, my concern is that it's not even close to the right amount. If we were, if we were $50,000 off on a small turnaround for a bus, how much, how is 120 gonna cover a parking lot when 100,000 covered the bus turnaround? Right, does that make sense?
The bus turnaround was closer to high 50s, it was not 100,000.
I just asked you earlier, that 50,000 for 2019-20 that was budgeted was for the bus turnaround, and you said, yeah, it was closer to 100,000, that's, that's what we actually paid in 2019-20.
Oh, that, yeah, no, I, I did say too, part of that 100,000 was the permit for the bus turnaround and legal fees, that 10464 of 1920 is also part of that.
So that, but that's off of the bus turnaround then, so that $100,000 is for the bus turnaround, in actuality.
As well, legal fees.
But that's legal fees for the bus turnaround?
And others, from my understanding.
So. I'm, I'll go back to my main point, I don't think $120,000 is enough to build a parking lot with abatement, and if, if that small amount of turnaround was supposed to be 50,000, how can a parking lot be one? I don't think it's a legitimate studied cost, is what I'm saying. Is there an estimate that they have for this? There's no estimate, there's nothing, nothing provided to us to say yes, go ahead and do it. And that's what we're here for, is to say, yeah, spend my, spend my, send our residents, spend my money as a resident this way. And I don't see that at all in anything here, or any of the questions being answered this way. It's all pushing around the bush, and nothing straightforward is coming out of this conversation.
Yeah, City Attorney, you may be able to comment on this, but it's, it's, as a separate authority, it's, it's the DDA Board's responsibility to go through the formal process in terms of gathering bids, confirming that, that what they want to do can fit within their budget and so on and so forth. And that, that process is part of the operations that support the activity of the DDA.
Right.
What we're dealing with right now is, is, is a budget, not, you know, much like in many of these things, budgets are, are projections and estimates with incomplete information that get refined as you actually go through the process of acquiring bids, making decisions about whether it's an appropriate bid, committing to contractors or consultants or whatever, and so on.
That, that's correct, I think it's fair to call this a projection, and this is what, based on what City Manager Sizeland has said, is the projection that the DDA Board has made for how they're going to expend the funds that they have, you know, which are also limited, it's not an unlimited budget that they have. This is their projection, but then, yes, they'll have to go through all the processes of getting bids, holding the public meetings, and going through the process of being transparent in how they're spending that money. I, I view this, you know, from a legal perspective, this $120,000 is no commitment, nobody's writing a check, nobody's signing a check. This is, this is an estimation from the DDA and the folks on the DDA Board of what, how they're going to spend the DDA funds.
So when I asked if we vote, if we vote yes on this on Monday, then we give them the free right to spend that money? Right?
Yes.
And I was told yes, so once we vote on it, so how can I vote on this if, if I haven't seen this? I don't think it's a legitimate budget, is what I'm saying. If they didn't vote on it, it's obviously, I, I, if, if I'm the only one that has a problem with it, I don't have, I, I'll, I'll be quiet, but.
No, I think, I think there are two issues, one is the only authority we, we have is whether we grant them these funds or not. And once we grant them those funds, there's no taking that back. So there's one issue, which is, is this enough money, or is it an appropriate amount of money? And then the other issue is, do we think that, you know, once we sign this money over, do we really want to give up any, any thought of oversight on having a parking lot in front of the library space? Because what I'm understanding is, we approve that budget, that's it, they, they can go forward with putting a parking lot there.
That's how I'm seeing it.
To be clear, Councilmember Fluid, you said that once we give them these funds, in fact, they will get the funds through the tax recapture, no matter what we do, that revenue is statutorily dictated. What we're talking about is giving them, approving through our guidance, how they're gonna use those funds. So the funds are gonna come to them regardless, and they'll either find an appropriate way to invest and spend them in the, in the district, or it ends up adding to their, their fund surplus account. And they have, I believe it's three years, you can roll forward the surplus if necessary, which is where that surplus appropriation came from in, in our discussion earlier. So the funds are gonna show up, no matter what we do. And so it's a question of guidance through the budget on the priorities for allocating those funds on projects.
Mayor?
Councilmember Hodges.
Yes, thank you. It seems to me there are two issues here, one would be one of compliance, are we meeting all state laws and other requirements that would then grant us the authority to be able to even take action here? So I would ask City Attorney Hollitt if that is the case. It's my understanding that DDA's and TIPAs do need to approve their budgets before submitting them to council for consideration. And then the second question would just be procedural for really anything related to the budget. If on Monday, when we're asked to consider this further, do we have the ability to make edits as part of that approval? Or if we just have to accept it as presented and either approve or deny it in that condition? So again, just to summarize, one, are we in compliance with all laws at this point? And if not, what do we need to do to remedy that? And then two, what would the procedural, what would the process be when we're asked to actually approve the budget on Monday? Can we make edits at that time or establish conditions?
Yeah, I, I, I believe we are in compliance, I suppose if we wanted to be more formalistic about it, we could have the DDA hold a special meeting, checking the timing of that. Again, I think the mayor makes a good point, which is this, this money has already been, it's not even allocated, it's the DDA's money. And so, you know, I guess part of this budget process is not us giving, as I say, the, the city council giving the DDA $120,000 its guidance on how that money is going to be spent or allocated, based on the independent board of the Downtown Development Authority and their recommendation. You know, I, I can check quickly into whether or not there needs to be a special meeting. It sounds like, given sort of the situation and, and how things have developed, that they have discussed this, they have planned for it. And again, it's, it's their estimation and their authority on how to allocate and spend the money that they have out of their tax recapture. So I, you know, I just, I don't want everybody, it, it seems like, it sounds like we're saying the city council is going to write a check for 120,000 to the DDA. The DDA has that money and they have to spend it, or, or at some point they need to spend it. They've made the determination that this is where that money should be allocated.
They haven't voted on it.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, I think that's the question. It just needs to be documented in order to meet that threshold.
They haven't, yeah, they haven't said anything.
It may be able to show.
They need to vote on a budget and present it to us, they haven't said anything, they've talked about things, now, which hasn't been voted on.
So to me, that's less about the substance of it, and just more about procedure and make sure we're honoring it and managing it properly.
That's one thing, but the second thing is, if, if we're telling them that they can spend the money, we, we're not giving them money, I never said, I never. I never said, I never thought that. I know they get it from the taxes of recapture, but we have the right to say, you should spend this money in a different way. If they're the Downtown Development Authority.
Yes.
You don't want them to spend money as, at a parking lot when they should be helping businesses currently developing businesses in that district, rather than building a parking lot which hasn't been presented in a way that I can say it's going to cost a hundred twenty thousand dollars. Or need, or the need of a parking lot at this time.
Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, I mean, my concern is, when you were presenting that, this budget, and you said that the board members were polled and they weren't able to meet, I was, I'm concerned that this didn't happen in an open meeting where residents, because residents do attend those meetings and can make public comment about what the DDA is doing. And so, as you were giving us your summary, that immediately caused me concern that this happened without a public process, and that's my concern.
And this is our.
In my.
Sorry, go ahead, go ahead, Nick, sorry.
No, and I'll have to certainly, but my understanding is that the last DDA meeting, they have discussed, and that's where that polling came from, but Larry and members of council, that's certainly something we'll address, and I'll reach back with you.
Yeah, that's.
Especially discuss.
That's my understanding as well, is that it happened in the last phase meeting, that polling that was referred to, which I missed because I was out of town.
Okay, but I think, you know, I do have the statute, and I think they do have to approve their budget before it comes to us. So that's, that's just a question that I have. Did they follow the process so that we're not making it worse?
You know, I'm going to ask the city attorney too, if the DDA could consider maybe having a special meeting of the DDA, potentially even on Monday.
Yeah, and, and we'll look at that.
Something that could be considered.
I, I think so. I'd have to look at the timing and make sure that we can fit in under all the requirements. I think a very fair question that we need to get the answer to is, did they, at their last meeting, approve the budget, you know, with this polling or whatever the phraseology was? And, and, you know, to councilmember Reed's point, let's make sure that they're in compliance so that we have the ability, you know, we're going sequentially in the right legal steps. That's, that's a fair point.
Right.
Let's see, that's a really important need to, if we want to assure the public trust and ensure that we're representing the public interest. And while we're on this note, Nick, it might be helpful if you just explain to us a little bit to the reporting relationship and the oversight responsibility, how, how that lines up with the DDA. I mean, do you, do you, does the director report to you in any way? Or what sort of oversight do you have and opportunity to review it?
The director, and I, I mean, I do have oversight of the director of the DDA and of the Tifa board, director.
And you attend all meetings?
I think I have attended all meetings, yes. I may have missed one, but I've been here four years, I might have missed one.
Thank you.
Is there any special, because we are in a special situation, can we withhold this budget until they vote on it and present it to us and still move forward for tonight?
Just this section of the budget?
Yeah.
I think, I think we need to refer that to the city attorney for.
Yeah, I'm going to ask Jake.
Yeah, and I'll have to, I'll have to look at that. I mean, I, one thing I think we have to be cognizant of is there are limitation, time limitations on the city council budget under the charter, if I'm not mistaken.
But we're not giving them any money, as we said. We're just helping them decide how to spend it. So we're not giving them any money. We can approve this budget at a later date, it doesn't affect our bottom line. Correct?
I would say it's correct.
We can always amend the budget, we've done that.
Right.
We can't amend.
We can do that.
We can amend the budget. I think it's, this is considered a part of the budget that we're required to approve by, by charter, but we can't amend the budget.
But just again, to clarify from a procedural standpoint, on Monday, you know, theoretically, someone's going to have to make a motion to approve the budget, can they include edits or amendments to the budget as part of that? Or are we approved, being asked to approve the entire package with no opportunity for edits or adjustments, which seems a little counterintuitive to me if we're asking for a public hearing as well, because theoretically, the input we receive will also impact the outcome and the final condition of the budget. So what, what is our ability on Monday?
Jake, I'm going to ask for your opinion.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would think as part of the public hearing, if there were requests for amendments or things like that as part of the vote, just like on other motions, that things particular to the budget could be amended. And I, I think, as I understand it, they could be amended subsequently as well.
Right.
I think that's right.
So if we vote on it with the, with the ability to amend it, do we vote on it as is now, or should we amend it now and have them bring up their amendment in the different direction, rather than, rather than voting on it with the one twenty in there? Take that out and then have them come to us with a proper budget, gone through their proper process, rather than us giving them the yes now? They should come to us for that yes, is what I'm saying, for that money spent properly. I'm not comfortable giving that, giving this budget to them now. I want it to be amended in the other direction, rather than us amend it, trying to take it back or trying to amend it a different way. Does that make sense?
It does, but I think we have to approve, there's an obligation under the charter that we approve the budget, and I think the DDA is part of the budget that we have to approve. I shouldn't say, you have to approve, I don't get a vote, but the, so I, I don't know that it's possible from the legal perspective to carve this out and address it later.
Isn't that what an amendment is?
I'm sorry?
Isn't that what an amendment is?
Yeah, yes, after it's approved, right.
So we, if I have a problem of proving it as is, how can we go forward? Or does anyone have a suggestion on how to move forward on that?
You're talking, you're talking to adding to and/or suggesting to what to eliminate, councilmember Reed?
Yeah, yeah.
I would certainly be emailing the DDA director.
Okay.
And the board.
Is there maybe a better way to ask a question? Just because, obviously, this is a controversial issue. What, what if we just separate out from this? And what if on Monday, we decide that this budget isn't lean enough and we want to do another cut? Do we have the ability to do that, to make those kinds of changes? Which I think is similar to what we're asking about, what's being asked, I should say, about the DDA budget.
I see. For example, you're referring to, say, you wanted to make amendment as part of the approval process to some item in the general fund, let's say.
Right, maybe we want to cut the planning part of it, or maybe we want to cut one of the trucks that are currently budgeted. Do we have the ability to do that and still meet the charter requirement of an approved budget in, in a timely fashion? And then I think that will answer the question of whether or not, if somebody was unhappy with any other part of the budget, in this case, the DDA, they would have that function available to them. I would have to think we do have that ability.
Right.
Someone in the chat is saying modify description for money? Is that a legal term?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch, I didn't catch the term.
I'm sorry.
Modified description for money.
Manager Saisland, if you look in the chat box, there was a comment written by.
My assistant to the manager just informed me, it looks like in that chat box that somebody just added a comment, when comments should only be used for technical issues, not for commentary.
But obviously, we're at a crossroads here, so we could use that advice on how to, how to move forward.
Yeah, and I, I'm going to have to get back to you. I just, I, I don't know that I can give you every answer on exactly how to proceed, if we're trying to carve something out or amend it later. I need a little bit of time to look at it, I just, I'm not comfortable.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, go, I'll, I'll stop.
Just, just along those lines, a couple of questions would be, how much money do they have to spend, you know, in this fiscal year? And how much can they keep in reserves? Because we did, in surplus, as they call it. And then, can they finish their budget process and present it to city council for an amended budget to be, just like we did with the Marina, we've done it, you know, we do it every year once we get the final number two. So I mean, I think there's a way to address this appropriation when they've gone through the steps they need to go through.
Yeah, for example, Jake.
I would agree.
Jake, something specific that you might look at is, if the council as a whole voted, let's say, to eliminate the budget on that line item, then the, then the budget would show a significant surplus, you know, of, of revenue over appropriations. What I think councilmember Reed is suggesting is that if that were the case, then the DDA could potentially then make a request for an amended budget to spend from that surplus on, on certain projects. I believe that's where you're going with it.
And then that would be presented to us at council to vote on, correct?
Yes, part, in other, in other words, they would, they would fill out, they would, if, if DDA then had a more detailed budget to present for the council.
So, yeah, and I'll, I'll take a look at that. I mean, it seems like a good solution, but I'll take a look at it.
Have we, have we ever changed anything in any of these budget workshops? Shouldn't it be the same process?
Mayor Danner, I'll ask you from history, has that been done?
We don't, because we don't vote in the budget workshop, this is the discussion, we only actually approve or change things as part of the vote, voting process.
Okay, so we could change it on the day of the vote, then, is what you're saying?
It's, it would be an amendment to the, if there's a budget item that you, as councilmember Hodges pointed out, if there's a budget item, in the proposed budget that the administration presents to us on Monday, if there's an item that someone proposes be amended before final approval, that amendment would be voted on by council, just like any other amendment before final approval, I believe.
Yes. And likewise, based on this discussion, the city manager could make modifications that would be presented to us at the time of voting, is that correct, city attorney?
I, I, I would have to look specifically, I don't know if that affects the publication requirements of the budget, so I'd want to take a quick look at that. You understand what I'm saying? Like, in other words, this has already been published, the public has looked at it. I would, I would want to make sure that it's permissible to modify it prior to the meeting and still meet all of the publication requirements for the information.
Thank you.
But then, I'm taking it that we're going to remove this and have them vote on it and bring it back to us to take out a surplus, is that correct? Is that what everyone else is hearing?
That will depend entirely on, on vote on Monday.
Okay, so we'd have to add it as an amendment to our vote, saying, we're amending that they remove this item, add it to their surplus, and return to us with a properly government-followed process of a budget approval and presentation to council. Correct?
Yes.
Right, and that's, that.
That's what I'm going to ask the city attorney to explore in detail with the process right on Monday.
Good, thank you, because that'll make it legitimate, which is always the right way to go. Thank you, sorry about the.
Any other further comments or questions regarding the DDA?
Moving on, we're going to move on to the Tifa. And first, we're going to do the graphs. Let me touch base first on the Tifa collection history. You'll note, in two thousand eleven, we collected about seven hundred ninety-nine thousand in the Tifa. And in the year twenty twenty, eight hundred fifty-six thousand nine fifty, and in twenty-one would be about nine hundred thirty-three thousand seventy. That's this graph, and now, I'm going to move to the Northwest Tifa expenditure distribution for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Distribution of expenditures. So part of the distribution, the Tifa has for legal services, forty-five thousand, financial administration, seventy thousand, administration fees, thirty-six thousand, supplies, ten thousand, residential improvements, four hundred fifty thousand, commercial improvements, three hundred five thousand, marketing promotions, seventy-five thousand, and MAC improvement debt retirement, three hundred twenty-five thousand. I do want to note an announcement too, that you'll note, if you're looking at your budget now for Tifa, that the salaries you'll see for full-time employees, Leah Smith, the new assistant to the city manager, part of her salaries charged to the budget, as was some public works, gardening, payroll, city hall, under the director of finance portion, that would be of the director of the Tifa, payroll, financial administration. And after an announcement, talking with the Tifa director, he has decided actually that he will continue on, we've been discussing a transition plan that Leah Smith, our assistant to the city manager, will take over as the DDA Tifa director in December of twenty twenty. Dale has actually, to help our district, or help out the Tifa district, would like to forego his salary for this fiscal, for this fiscal year, which you'll see was dropped to thirty-six thousand. So Dale will continue on still at this current time as the Tifa director in DDA. And I did, I should have noted, he's also foregoing a salary on DDA for this current fiscal year. So those salaries for Dale will, he's going to forego those for this coming fiscal year. And I'm working closely with Leah and Dale. Obviously, this, there's been a transition period with COVID, where we haven't been able to work as close to each other and work on training, that Leah Smith will take over. So I just wanted to note that. And if there's any further comments or questions, I'll, I'll keep going, I see the mayor's got one. I do have the Tifa director on the line as well for any further questions, but I will.
The one thing I wanted to clarify is, the, the director position, when we are ready for that transition a little bit later in this calendar year, the director position is, is appointed by the mayor, approved by council. So that, to formalize who's going to be the director going forward, I think is something that comes to us as a council, if I'm not mistaken. I'm going to ask Jake to confirm that, but I believe that that's the case.
But I believe the, the act says the board may hire a director.
It does.
We've heard that with our bylaws, that, and I don't have them right in front of me, but I think we said they may have a director. If not, then it would be a member of administration. I can't remember exactly how we worded it.
That's a good point.
But the board hires a director.
Is the Dale, are you on the line right now?
I'm kind of high, everybody. I think I'm going to China to help.
One moment, looks like technical difficulties.
Maybe right, you may be right about that, council, councilmember Reed, I will confirm that. I think.
We addressed that with our bylaws, and I don't remember the exact wording that we used.
Yeah, I think you're right about that.
Changed it.
I'll take back what I said.
Yeah, we changed it from shall to may, and it's bylaws.
That's, that's my recollection as well, is we, if we didn't have a director, I think that it was the city manager that then would be, as I recall, I don't have in front of me as well, but, but I think that's correct.
That's correct, we did change that to may, that's correct.
This is Dale, can everyone hear me?
It says, by the way, it said, yeah, the, the language that I have here is subject to the approval of the governing body, and the council is considered the governing body. So that's what I was referring to in terms of council's approval. So you're right, the, the Tifa selects, the Tifa may employ, subject to the approval of a governing body.
Hello, Bob, can you hear me? This is Dale.
I can hear you.
Everyone hears me now?
We can hear you.
Okay, yeah, going back over and bouncing back to the DDA a little bit as well, my understanding, the council does have to approve each of their budgets, and to amend their budgets, the DDA and Tifa have to live within those amendments. So that answers the earlier question. Bouncing back to the DDA quickly, previously, we looked at building a parking lot and had CEBG funds allocated for a parking lot in our store, and the Tifa had agreed to provide support with the art center. However, part of it this year, what did include in this year's budget, an approval from the DDA to provide a parking lot and a turnaround. We didn't get to the parking lot at this point, we are getting prices on it, but there's no action going forward in the near future on that one. So holding off on those expenditures, yes, if you're concerned, that would suggest you, now, hold off on that as you choose, as, you know, under your guidance. Relative to the Tifa itself, and the directorship in the past, what has happened is, I as the Manager, and then, when it was Nick as my assistant, the two of us would take the DDA and Tifa. Most of the work was assigned with Nick, and the costs for, labor cost allocated to the Tifa and DDA, were basically done through journal entries, we're just assigned the general administrative cost there. So going forward, whether you name Nick, Leah, or anyone else as Director, has to be confirmed by the council. The DDA or the Tifa may select a Director, but I'm almost, my understanding is the council has to confirm that selection. So what I would anticipate the, you may wish to do is, the way we've operated in the past, is just have the manager coordinate it with your assistant. But again, it requires council action.
We can't hear the City Manager.
Yeah.
Nick?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay.
What, what was Dale's summation, I didn't catch it, I did not hear what he said at the end, maybe he could repeat, could Dale repeat?
Oh, hi, Jim. Basically, what I indicated in the past, what council may wish to consider is doing what we have done in the past, where the duties are basically undertaken by the City Manager and the Assistant, there wasn't an actual tile assigned of Director. We assigned a lot of labor cost, we assigned various administrative costs, when you look at the budget on the Tifa under Director Finance, there's 195,000. In previous years, we would have a general allocation of wages for the offset overall administrative costs for the city. We reduce those costs in the current budget, or that you're in, and the proposed budget to a far lesser number, so we can focus more on capital improvements. So, to sum that up, Jim, what I'm basically saying is, what I'm saying is, you may just wish to go to the process where Nick is the overseer and assisted with Lee.
Okay, thank you.
Any further comments, or otherwise, I'll continue on items on the Tifa. So you'll note Dale did touch on salaries, Director Finance, I'll also note as well, any additional, you'll see that there's additional of legal services, that proposed budget is to add to the bond done for the proposed DPW building over on Mac Avenue. I just wanted to note that, of 45,000 for the year 2021. You'll note there's holiday decorations, those are continuing to be the same, pedestrian lighting in front of the homes, we actually had this past year, a gentleman that would go around to the homes and camp, and see if the need light bulbs are placed, or the radar sensors to improve in front of those homes. We'll also note, you'll see residential improvements, that original budget in 1920 is zero, however, that's 425,000 now, which includes consulting fees, tree planting, landscape enhancements, residential alley improvements, non-motorized parking area, holiday decorations, and currently, right now, the Director and I and the City Attorney have been reviewing, you may have seen in the newspaper recently, or in Cranes, there are a couple communities, Royal Oak, to be specific, Dearborn, that have provided funds due to COVID-19 relief. I, the attorney, and the Director have reached out to Royal Oak specifically to find out more detailed information, how they were able to do this. So far, we have reached no conclusion with Royal Oak. I, we're concerned that they might have actually released their information too early, and we are unsure whether it's according to their plan that they can do this, or state statute, we are trying to figure that out. Dearborn as well, after doing some research and looking, working with them, their grant programs for COVID-19 relief, from our understanding at this point, is that the programs available for COVID-19 relief are from grants to their Dearborn DDA, and donations to the Dearborn DDA. However, continuing with COVID-19, and how can we improve and help, you know, our Tifa District and our residential, including commercial, we have left, the Tifa has left room in both those areas, that if certainly any of these things do change, and/or we find ways we can help, we've left cushion in there that we're able to help provide assistance to the District residential as a whole and commercial. So I just wanted to note those for members of council.
Right, and, I'm sorry.
Attorney Hodges.
Jumping real quick, City Manager Seisland, we have been researching the issue, I think from a pretty careful examination of the statute, it's certainly not, obviously permissible under the statute, in fact, I don't think, from what we've looked at, that the statute allows the kind of grant-making for rent payments, or payroll payments and things like that, that we've seen in some of these other communities. So just to emphasize what, what City Manager Seisland is saying, we're trying to figure out if there's another way that these communities are accomplishing that, because from the face of the statute, that type of direct relief is not permitted. There, there is some allowance for, and I think the city has done it in the past, based on my conversations, previous conversations with the mayor, where there have been grant programs to, you know, stay enhanced the roof or the facade of your building, but there is certainly nothing that makes it obvious in the statute that that money can be made available for direct rent payments, employee payments, and things like that. So we're, we're not giving up on that hope, but if, there is certainly no relief from the statute, if you will.
I, I must, if I can add this to there, we, and we considered the same with the DDA, trying to be open-ended, because Nick and I spoke with, I received different reports from Bonn, and as far as what our limitations are, as Jake mentioned, for direct business assistance. We have been very successful in the District with grants and gifts from individual donors. You know, for example, the Business District and, and Kirchvall, the Girls Point Housing Foundation, so we'll reach out to those organizations as well. Jake, when I look at, for example, if, if we eliminated salaries within the Tifa District itself, for example, I'll forego, you know, my salary, can that be directed to direct business assistance, for example, coupons that are reimbursable, or something like that, so at least that could be a direct contribution, as much as a donation?
Yeah, I'd have to look specifically, but we can't help administer grants through the, the DDA or the Tifa, but I, I would have to look more specifically on this, I don't, I don't know the answer to the question of foregoing salary, then turning that into sort of a direct deposit that can be distributed in a different way.
Okay. I know with speaking with the merchants, Margers and a few others, the thought was we'd expand marketing promotions, you'll look at some of the magazines that go out, such as Point Magazine, whether we create a special directory just for the District with inserts for coupons, so they help offset advertising, or free up some of their monies for advertising. One of the problems the merchants are going to have, occur, as many of the workers are part-time, and they're going to have, they've expressed a concern to me, that they're going to have a problem bringing in staff, is one of the most challenging points. Jake, I don't see any limitation as far as advertising, promoting, us doing that wholesale for the District as a whole, correct?
I, I believe that's correct, I, I could double-check that, I have to go back to the memo that we just finished up, but I, I believe marketing and advertising is covered.
Okay, because likewise, there's, there's a significant share within the budget allocate for residential programs as well, and what we're looking at is, we've always had our pedestrian lighting program for individual lighting enhancements, but as a district-wide, we always considered it, even though it may benefit any individual homeowner, it benefits the District as a whole. One of the questions came up, can we use monies for, for example, mobile code or replacements? You know, it's something that would be district-wide, decorative fencing within the business districts, even if it's for any individual property owner, if it's district-wide, is there a greater allowance as far as what our ability would be?
Again, I'd want to, I'd want to be more sure of my answer before giving it, and that's something we can clarify at, at that level, but I, I certainly am happy to do that. Like, like Mr. Seisland said, we, we are looking very carefully at this, and trying to be very sure and careful, but also, you know, hopefully as generous as possible.
The other thing I would point out with the Tifa budget to note, is there's a $325,000 allocation, and under the term installment purchase contract. What that reflects was the direction the council and the Tifa was looking to take on relocating the Public Works facility on Mac Avenue. The 325 represents what an annual bond payment would be to cover the cost of such a facility.
Thank you, Director Kraneak, any other comments or questions for me or the Director? Alex, Councilmember Rayland?
So I, I do understand the 325 for the DPW, my question is, if we, if we get hit and we get less money from Tifa, to not be able to cover that 325, where does that come from?
Right now, there's about a 20, 25% gap between what we're actually capturing in the Tifa versus what's available from its set values, so in effect, you could lose 20 to 25% of the values in the District itself, before you would lose any tax dollars within the District. What we've actually been experiencing, because in the District, is the pace of increase in values within that District, then outpacing the City as a whole for quite a few years now, I think Nick has a bar chart in that shows the growth-
Yeah.
-in tax values. In the last couple of years alone, it's averaging around 8% in here. When you look at the trend of, and if we anticipate even half that growth going forward, the, you've got more than a fair cushion to cover, you know, any dips you'll see within the market. Frankly, I think overall, within the community, with the prices we're experiencing in that District, I think you're going to see greater and greater growth with some of the new projects coming into the District. You've got Janet that'll be coming online soon, you've got Bo Praise is going to be coming online, construction's going to start for a bookstore, Sartavoy, I know the park markets need additional improvements, so I think you're going to look at continued growth as well, but in answer to your question, there will be a significant additional cushion fund that would protect you on that end.
Okay, thank you.
One of the reasons this is actually reflected in your budget, is, back to the debate of where DPW should be relocated to, whether it should be considered Joe's Garage, or some other location, and how this came about, the Tifa Board as a whole, felt that, should council elect, they, they favored the site at Mac, Weber, Maryland quarter, and they basically extended that same reference or information back to the council. The council's preference last November was to pursue the relocation of the DPW, that's why it's in the budget.
Thank you.
So, the Tifa's on board with it, and the reason you're going to review your Master Plan update for the Tifa, is the bond attorney asked that the, can be updated to be more specific, that public facilities would include, the language that included a Public Works Garage. So, so I guess that's my recap on that, and covers the, you know, funds there.
Councilmember Hodges?
Thank you, Mr. Seisland. Mr. Kraneak, when the projections were done for the capture, did it take into, did they take into consideration the fact that large portions of the District would be taken off the tax rolls, and therefore not contributing to that capture?
The location you're referring to, between Weber and Maryland, the total collection collected currently by the City, $2,500 is the total amount, the State of Girls Point Park receives from that structure. The, so there isn't a, a large, significant piece that's being taken off the rolls, we, it took us, what took the community, I'd say, over eight years, just have Huntington thing trying to knock on the door and express an interest. Essentially, the Tifa Board was having a present, improving the tight lines, and the overall improvement is better suited there. Also, the Board tells that freeing up space on Jefferson, is that's our key primary entryway, the most visible, it makes more sense to have a new facility, rather than maintaining an old one on Jefferson, which is better suited for redevelopment, regardless of what development you put on Jefferson.
Thank you.
Did we lose you?
Senator, you're muted.
Okay, Councilmember Fluid.
So it's the same question that we have, we had with the DDA, did the Tifa Board, as a group, or were they individually polled, did they discuss and agree on this budget?
I think in response to that, and it goes back to Mel Schell's comment, as far as the procedural steps on how we go about it, historically, we've had the council approve the budget, then we've had the DDA Tifa revisit, okay, what's the best use of distributing those monies? So we could have a special meeting to have them pass what you're looking at, but ultimately, you decide what's in that budget, and relative to whether you wish to provide amendments within it, is really at the discretion of the City Council. At the last meeting, reviewing the master plan, and the other information, what we asked each of the merchants to do is to come up with what they would like to see in the budget, you'll see a, a significant answer is broken down to residential improvements and commercial improvements, alley improvements, and so forth, as Nick mentioned on the details. What we are hoping for, and that's where we're going to need reliance and input from Jake, in as far as what can we use legally to provide direct assistance to businesses, because right now, that's the most pressing need.
I, I would agree, I'm one of the, the people who's been asking about that, but are we saying that 425,000, we're hoping to hold on to that strictly for that purpose, or are there other residential improvements? Or are there other residential improvements that are gonna fall under that?
Nick had mentioned what the detail, we were looking at alley improvements, uh, expanded tree planting services, uh, mobile totors, uh, pedestrian lighting, uh, possibly looking at overhead Detroit Edison lighting depending on the need versus other issues. Um, frankly, I think the more we can assist the business district directly, the better. It, but, um, overall, there's a collection of items within the, uh, that 425 we're hoping to put to best use.
Okay. Thank you. Um, yeah, I would, I would feel better if these were kind of specified, um, individually as, as, as much as it's possible.
Right. Yeah, Nick and I, we went through, we've got a, we've got it broken down in totally good detail that Nick comes through and will provide for you.
Okay.
All right. Councilmember Rayland, I remember you had a question and then Councilmember Reed will get to you next after that.
Thank you. Sorry, Larry. Um, I just have some questions about some of the items here. There's a $45,000. I've just wondered what that.
The recent, that's included by myself and Nick is going through the bond procedures. We anticipate the legal fees will be, well, we have, fortunately, that's based for legal fee need. Historically, with both the Tifa and DDA, there has been very little in the way of legal fees, uh, charged or incurred. Most recently with the, uh, updating the state statute, uh, updating, uh, rules, regulations, updating the master plan, these, uh, memorandums of understanding, we haven't heard quite a bit of legal costs in that. Okay. By far, far from our routine, but on this one, if the council continues to elect a wish to, uh, relocate DPW and provide for, um, funding, you can anticipate that these additional legal fees.
Okay. And then another one is the traffic services of 35,000, but none, none of that. We're moving it to this year. I don't know. Is it the same item? Just, just some clarification.
Uh, Nick, we look at DTE lighting on that one, I believe.
For traffic?
If you wanna upgrade.
Uh, yes, Director Kraniek, yeah, I believe, uh, because you're referring to traffic services, 35,000. Uh, yes, my understanding, yeah, we were looking into that for, uh, Charlevoy, uh, for the DTE.
Okay. So that, that doesn't.
Uh, did you have, Glenn?
Doesn't tie in properly then. Is that what you're saying? Or does, does it? DTE would.
Uh, can you, can you revise the question or what was the?
DTE fall into traffic services is what I'm asking. I don't know if it's a.
Uh, DTE for street lighting.
Okay. Perfect. Perfect. And then just, there's a business district contract for 80,000.
Oh, uh, contractual services. I think it was just like the same contract. Uh, variety of things we've done in the past, curb replacement, curb repairs, sidewalk repairs, uh, just a, a collection of different items there.
Awesome.
It's not necessarily one contract. It's just, uh, as expenses are, as things arise within the district. A lot of times we're maintenance oriented, but rather than seeing them directly charged to the city, we have those costs absorbed by the DDA.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate the, the summary.
Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, my question is a bit along those lines that the, uh, one of the expenditures is for residential alley improvements. That's on your description of expenditures. I don't know if it's a line item on the actual budget, but you put it, and my question is.
Right.
How, um, because we discussed the, um, the road bond and that that included the alleys. So what, what is the, what's the difference here? Why, why would those just be included in the bond?
Well, they could be included in the bond. We've been trying to maximize the amount of available funds for general paving throughout the community. And now with some of the alleys, when you look at, uh, even the business district alleys are rough. And if the, we felt that the resources are available, particularly in the business and residential area alley. Amount of money that were, was assigned through that bond, Larry. We, the city's undertaken 90% of the local streets, additional ones that, uh, it's looking to complete. Major streets are in pretty good shape. You've got St. Paul and a few other streets coming up. But going forward, money's gonna be very tight within your street fund budget. You've reduced your millers to cover the cost of those street improvements. So you're going to be challenged. So I think from my and Nick's review, it's best if you can have the Tifa for picking up some of these costs, particularly for the residential alley improvement.
And those.
Who's any of the street money for that yet?
Okay. And by alley improvements, you're just referring to the paving, correct?
Yeah, yeah, that's correct.
Thank you.
Uh, any other further comments or questions regarding the Tifa? Uh, moving on, okay, we're gonna go to, um, miscellaneous, which is, uh, uh, Fund 260. This is the, uh, indigent, yeah, indigent defense grant, uh, which is, um, uh, funds for a court-appointed attorney for those who can't afford, uh, an attorney, um, during a hearing here at, uh, GPP City Court. Uh, this budget relatively has stayed about the same. Just wanted to make note of that. Uh, moving now to, uh, Fund 265, the drug law enforcement. So this would be, uh, sale of confiscated property, uh, with the public safety. Um, you know, that, that budget hasn't changed too much. The original budget was about 5,000 in 1920. And the 2021, 2021 requested budget's about 3,000. I, and then you'll note too, uh, we'll see about a smaller budget. We're thinking for small tools and equipment for, um, uh, drug law enforcement. Uh, moving on to, uh, account 275. This is the community development block grant. So this is something that the city of Gross Point Park has participated in for years. Uh, at its current time, um, we, there, the city of Gross Point Park receives about $20,000. Uh, this gets passed on from the federal government down to the state, down to the county and then to us. Each gross point right now is pooling together their $20,000 in support services that will go to Pats uh, for senior transportation services and the helm, uh, which, uh, you know, will help for meals on wheels and things of that nature. Um, any questions on those three, uh, accounts? Uh, seeing none, we'll move on to, uh, the debt accounts of 305 and 307. Uh, as discussed earlier, uh, this 2007 bond is actually for the sale of, um, properties um, that the city had bought. The original budget was about 576,000. Oh, that's current property taxes and 594. And then you'll note the principal interest, uh, have stayed relatively the same, uh, with just some minor increases there. Any, uh, questions or comments regarding that? Seeing none, we'll move to, um, the 2019 debt. Uh, this one is actually for the capital improvement of City Hall. And so that fund right here, you'll see, uh, the activity was 435,000. And the, uh, requested budget for that is 2.2. Uh, Clerk Blayhut, I believe the total, uh, price for the construction bond was about 2.6.
$2,650,000.
Uh, can you repeat that, please?
Yes, $2,650,000.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other, uh, comments or questions regarding that? I'm seeing none. Moving through, moving on. We'll go to roads real quick. So we're on to, uh, Fund 306. This is the millage for, um, the one mill for the city. Uh, we are expected to collect about 648,000, um, uh, for the budget this year. And I think we budgeted about half of this to local, 500,000 to local roads and 150 to major roads. Any questions regarding this, uh, millage? Seeing none, I'm going to move forward now to the capital improvement fund. And I will make a couple notes, uh, here, uh, specifically savings that the city of Gross Point Park looked to save. Um, the staircase to the Lavens deck and the floating dock, they originally budgeted 1920, uh, were not spent this year, which, which was about a $20,000 savings. Uh, kayak racks, um, I do have exciting news. We are gonna be having about 15 more racks, which will mean 60 more kayaks can be taken off the list and added, uh, for park and rec activities. Uh, reach down to concrete repairs, uh, Patterson gazebo. We have budgeted about 9,000 there. That's that gazebo that's closer to, uh, the water. Uh, there's certainly some, uh, TLC that needs to be, uh, worked on over there. Uh, doors at lift station Patterson, that's over at the, uh, three mile pump station. You'll notice about a, uh, about $5,000 change in the requested budget. IT right annual contract, that is our IT provider for the city of Gross Point Park. Um, due to the amount of malware and spyware that has actually been, um, attacking municipalities and holding ransom. Uh, you may have seen these cases in the state of New York, Texas, uh, Florida. I think there's been some. Uh, IT rate is gonna be incrementally increasing those costs to us because they have had to buy increased software into our equipment at their facility in Bath Township, Michigan. So that's why you'll see a slight increase in 21, uh, from 17 to 21,000. And come next year, you'll also see another slight increase due to those amount of funds. Uh, this company, by the way, is an IT provider for most local communities in the state of Michigan. Um, we'll also note equipment, public safety. Uh, this is just additional equipment, uh, for our public safety. We've added about $31,000 here. Um, let's see, what else can I make of note? Uh, HVAC update at Park and Rec. Uh, we had budgeted about 5,000 and Chad had suggested to, uh, Jane and I that he was getting quotes and needed about 16,200, uh, for the Lavens Center, uh, updates there. Uh, we did have a savings. If you moved down to Commercial Stove at the Tompkins Center, there was budgeted about $10,000. Uh, we are not, um, adding to the 2021 budget of that. Moving down even further, you'll note the electric charging station, we had budgeted about 25,000. And, uh, this year, uh, we have, uh, not budgeted that. Moving down a little further, uh, you'll notice, uh, this is something added new. Uh, revamping the chipping green, uh, putting green. So, uh, this, this came about after Chad Craig and our park supervisor had been doing dog park workshops, uh, with residents regarding dog park locations within Patterson. It was, uh, noted by residents and observed by, um, staff that, uh, there certainly needed to be some, uh, maintenance and upkeep of this area. So we added to, uh, this here for about 3,500. And I also want to note that the maintenance garage, uh, over at Patterson needs some, uh, uh, tuck pointing. And that's about $8,000. And the last item you'll see, the replace engine on back all, that's a machine that actually, uh, is used for water main brakes by our public works department. And, um, so we need to add about $7,000 in there. Um, I know there's quite a bit here. If, uh, council has any questions on items, I'd be happy to answer them. Uh, Councilmember Fluid, then Councilmember Hodges.
Um, just on the, the revamping, the putting green, um, is that going to take place after a final determination is made for the location of the dog park?
Uh, I have not discussed that yet with the park director. Um, we'll have to, uh, we'll have to, yeah, have some conversations. But we did, we did want to say, no matter where the location is, we still do wanna have the, the sand, you know, there's some sand that needs to be added, the actual chipping part. Um, you know, needs a little bit of maintenance as well. And I do know, um, some of our staff are there, were there today, trying to help clean up some of the weeds around the area due to, uh, you know, we haven't had as much staff at the parks, um, due to COVID and I know they're cleaning that up.
And, and I know, you know, you're just budgeting for that amount, um, in case you need it. But I just wanted to point that out, that the dog park location is still up in the air. So it would affect whether that's actually, that full amount is actually spent or not.
That is correct. Yes. Yeah. At this time, the dog park location, um, you know, has been delayed due to COVID. Uh, Councilmember Hodges, you had a question?
Yes, Mr. Seisland, I think it's just worth noting the contributions of the Gross Point Park Foundation to our capital costs. They're not reflected here. They pay directly to any vendor that is hired. You have assured me that the auditors do approve that, um, approach to accounting for that. Um, but again, I think it's worth mentioning because it is a, a notable percentage of the total here. In fact, do you happen to know what that percentage might be or what the total value of the, um, the foundation contribution might be in any given year? Perhaps Mr. Kraniek would be able to answer that question if he's still on the line, just so we understand the scope and the scale and the impact of that donor group.
Let me check with, um, Finance Director Blayhut if she may have an idea. Jane, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. Um, you know, I'm not really sure. I'm gonna say between three and four million since it was, since it's inception.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other further comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll, oh, Councilmember Rayland.
Sorry, um, we were talking about parks and rec and the playground equipment. I remember hearing we were possibly improving our playground equipment. Is that anywhere in here?
Uh, that's gonna be a donation through the Gross Point Park Foundation, so that's not reflected in here.
Okay. That's wonderful. Thank you.
But it is significant.
That's for Patterson.
I, maybe the mayor recalls, he and I, as you all know, both serve on that board. I believe it was in the neighborhood of $300,000 plus. So as testimony to the significance of those contributions and the importance of offsetting the cost, um, to taxpayers, um, certainly is worthy of acknowledgement.
So do we have those funds listed anywhere? Should we add those as a separate tab or anything like that, the donations that come? Like you mentioned, Councilmember Hodges, that these are coming in, they're paying for things directly to vendors. Would it be behoove us to, to show that to the residents of how much is coming in from these places?
Well, it's certainly part of the storytelling and, you know, it's all, I know the budgeting that I do in my day job. You, you, you know, you do have opportunities for notes to highlight those sorts of things that aren't necessarily, um, substantive to the document itself, but important to the storytelling so that, um, those that are reading it or trying to understand the organization have a full picture. Um, so I don't know, you know, Jane probably knows best if there's a mechanism to do that, but from an auditing standpoint, um, it's not required.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I'll talk more offline with you about the, the foundation too. That's great. Thank you.
Any other further comments or questions? Seeing none, uh, let's move on to Fund 592, Water and Sewer. Um, and so let's first pull up the, uh, graph. Uh, it says water sewer cost distribution. For the fiscal year 2021, uh, you'll note that Grillex water sewer fees are about 1.8 million. Grillex water, water fees are about 1.5 million. Park repairs and maintenance are about 2.4 million. Um, and you may ask, you know, what, what are those park repairs and maintenance? Uh, part of that includes engineering, uh, meter replacement, line repairs, water quality testing, inspections, sewer repair and, uh, things like, um, you know, preparing an asset management plan. So I just wanted to make note of that. And then moving. And then moving, which will help explain a little further, the Great Lakes Water. You'll see the document looks like this, water rates and sewer rates. So I'll do the best I can to help explain this because there's a lot to it. There's, the Great Lakes Water Authority charges a flat rate and a flow rate for a water and sewer. They charge typically by mil, for water, they charge by million gallons of cubic feet. A cubic foot equals about seven and a half gallons of water. As you've seen before, in that prior chart, two thirds of the operating, two thirds of the budget is operating for Great Lakes Water and the third is the parks maintenance. So looking at your budget here, sewer for twenty nineteen, the flat sewer rate will remain the same as two thousand eighteen, which is about one point eight million. In twenty twenty, the flat sewer rate, which is a fee of a hundred fifty three thousand multiplied by twelve months of the year will be about one million eight hundred thirty six thousand. And now you're going to go below and you're going to see twenty twenty IWC or industrial waste charge. Gross Point Park does not have any typical industry like you would see in a Clinton Township or in the suburbs. However, as a collective group, each city that is part of Great Lakes Water Authority has to help pay for industrial waste charge, which you'll note is eleven twenty-three times twelve months of the year. So overall, the city is going to see about a seven thousand five hundred dollar decrease in sewer fees. Any questions regarding sewer before I move on to water? Seeing none. Regarding the water fees, there's a flat water rate for twenty nineteen, which was seventy six thousand nine hundred times twelve months, that'll be about nine hundred twenty-two. In twenty, they reflected down to seventy-six four hundred for twelve months, which is about nine sixteen eight hundred. Now we're going to the flow rate per million, millions of cubic feet or gallons. There's fifty-nine thousand five hundred times ten dollars and thirty-four cents, which equals six hundred fifteen two thirty. And in twenty twenty, there was a slight increase of MCF, actually, excuse me, slight decrease in MCF, but the charge to eleven oh four. However, that will actually decrease us to about two thousand five hundred ten dollars. So total, we're looking at about sixteen thousand twenty-four dollars in decreased costs. Something the city has been exploring into is the rate methodology of the Great Lakes Water Authority. Concerns have been brought up about charges. And this is something that you'll note that we actually have increased in our budget, engineering fees. Because we have had engineers taking a look into our meters and they've had many discussions, Great Lakes Water Authority regarding these. And also the methodology of how an urban community like Gross Point Park is charged compared to a more rural community that could be in northern Macomb County. These are the types of things that we're looking into because, you know, the costs are significant. And we'd like to do what we can for our residents to help save. Before I go into the actual Fund 592 budget, any questions regarding the water and sewer rates? Councilmember Hodges.
Mr. Seisler, if I could just comment because I think it's important to us, the fact that this city council listens to its residents and takes feedback heard at meetings. Some of you may recall, one of our residents bringing up a concern that in comparison to our peer communities, it appears we are being over or we're certainly charged to a greater level. And I did make that inquiry with our finance director and you've already, and yourself as well, and you've already in part answered that question. But there are certain realities that we need to face, that there could be some disparities in part because we don't have a contract, because we do want to preserve our ability to be able to do our own water perhaps at some point. But this might be something we want to put in goals and objectives for our city management team, including our city attorney, to be looking at remedies for that, because we should probably have more ability to enhance the strength of our voice in that process as a community, given the large impact that this does have on our residents. So I wanted to make sure that that's out there and that we continue to keep this on the radar.
Thank you, councilmember Hodges. Before I move on to the Fund 592, going through water and sewer, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead. I did previously note engineering fees. You'll see that the cost originally budgeted was about fifty thousand dollars under sewage disposal. We now increased that to about a hundred thousand. Wet well cleanout, this is stayed the same. This is the cleaning out of our Jefferson Pump Station over here and inside the wet wells. The city Public Works Department, some of you may know him as Pat Thomas. We're working, we've budgeted a hundred sixty thousand deciding priority wise whether we need a brand new Mack truck, a flat bed for loading big heavy equipment or a front loader for water main breaks, leaf collection. So we're working on that right now. And then finally you'll move down and, oh, somebody have a, I thought I saw a hand. Oh, okay. At the very bottom, you'll see a weather station rainfall monitors. We have budgeted for this. Typically in the past, the city had relied on and used the National Weather Service or AccuWeather and looking to Great Lakes Water Authority for rainfall totals. But we would like to have our own rainfall monitoring equipment on site so we can see the impacts of significant storm events. You may note specifically in storms like we've had in two thousand sixteen and seventeen, there were instances where Detroit City Airport, which is fairly close to us or even Gross Point Farms, have had significant changes in their rain data. So we would like to have further information specifically for the park. That's why you see that in there. Any questions regarding sewage disposal before I move to sewer pump station?
Nick, I have one. Can you explain depreciation, please? Five two seven nine six zero one zero zero.
Okay, so this depreciation is actually a non cash expense. So this is equipment that's purchased over time through the city. And it's for, yeah, sorry, and it's for like equipment for sewage.
Okay, and it has to be reflected in the budget, okay?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fluid.
Is there any one thing in here specifically that you can point to that is addressing the flooding problem that we have with a lot of the residences that are south of Jefferson?
Let me take a look for you real quick. Wet well cleanout is one. This is something that, you know, cleaning out our pumps, our pump station over here specifically. Engineering fees, looking into potentially, you've heard the term EERV. That is the extreme emergency release valve discussion. And that part of those engineering fees will be going to that. And various operating supplies, if there's any sort of, you know, break or fix that needs to take place. So specifically with, within Department 5275 sewage disposal, those are areas for improvement to prevent flooding. And I can keep going on if there's other areas applicable.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Councilmember Rayland, did you have a question or is that a thumbs up? I wasn't, oh, okay. Let's move on to sewer pump station. So part of the wages there are full-time employees. You'll note, we do have a full-time staff member that is our city electrician and also our pump station manager. Part of his wage in there included with other public works employees who are on call, you know, at this station. Professional contractual services is other services for reviewing the equipment, making sure it's being tested right. You know, pump controls and such. Repair sewer system, that's miscellaneous repairs and or maintenance of the pump station. Three mile station controls, you're going to note seeing forty thousand dollars right there. Why it wasn't budgeted the previous year before. This will allow the pump station manager to be able to look at the controls of the three mile station remotely, whether it's through his smartphone or whether it's through a computer. So this gives us a significant opportunity for staff that, we may have staff on site, but we also will have staff that are at home, you know, if they're waiting to be on call, can watch the station there. Preventive maintenance, councilmember Fluid, that's something you can note to further maintenance for water events. Let me see, oh, we did have a saving of the three mile storm station transfer. That was a line item that we saved twenty-five thousand for. And I think that's about it. I'll note there, any questions regarding sewer pump station? And I'll move, if not, I'll move on to water department. Seeing none. I'm going to note here salaries of full-time employees currently, or nineteen twenty, it's about two hundred seventy thousand. Our requested budget for this upcoming fiscal year is two thirty-five. Professional contractual services, that'll stay about the same. Water charges, there's a slight increase from one point five twenty-nine thousand seven hundred to one point five thirty-five thousand. You're going to see, one, two, three, four, about five line items for repair. This various is water meters, hydrants, water main breaks, equipment used for, like the back all that I mentioned that needed an engine replaced. This is the various areas that our water department utilizes there and also for changing out meters. You'll also note that we need to replace a cab for an older Ford pickup truck, F eight hundred. So that's why you'll see ten thousand one hundred budgeted into there. And anything else of note? About what I have now, any questions before I move on? Seeing none. Going to move on. We're going to move on to the Marina Fund. So you will note for boat wells in nineteen twenty, we have budgeted about two hundred seventy thousand. The requested budget this year is two hundred ninety-three thousand. The reason for this increase is that the city of Gross Point Park is providing, is doing a five percent increase for the next five years. You know, I should verify, Clerk Blayhut, is that three or five years we work?
No, it's for the next three years.
Three years, thank you. Moving down, you will note previously that there's been some discussion regarding upon review salaries, why there's so much cost in full-time employees, temporary employees. This is where the city of Gross Point Park and other local governments have operated where you get multiple, you get a staff member that may work in multiple departments. So you'd seen in the past where you might have more wages charged to the Marina and that could be our park supervisor Chad Craig. Some of his, you know, wages are charged to Marina, to Lavins Center, to Recreation, to Parks. And so you will note specifically the administrative and the temporary employees from nineteen twenty to twenty twenty-one have been greatly reduced to reflect that. Same with the fringe benefits, you will note. Repair of maintenance land seawall, originally budgeted about sixty thousand in nineteen twenty and we slightly reduced it to about fifty-five thousand two hundred. Moving down a little further, I'd like to note boat slip refund. The current activity is about six thousand six hundred ninety. Requested budget is about two thousand at the recommendation of Chad Craig. This has come from concerns of those who have used, who are either would have used the Marina or currently use the Marina that may be looking to go to alternative sites due to, at the time, projected high water levels. And obviously, as we're looking right now, we're, we as a city are watching ever closely, monitoring those areas. For those who have walked to Windmill Point Park as of late, we actually had, there should, there should be some markings on the ground and we'll probably end up putting some orange construction fencing that you would typically see in construction sites. The reason you'll see this is potential small wave run-up or just water saturation. You know, we just want to make sure, you know, people are safe from that area there. And we're going to be adding potentially maybe some sandbags over at Pier One just to the electric junction box as where prior to, there had been concern, we may have to sandbag the entire Marina at this current time. But knocking on wood, I think we're going to be in good shape. And that was at the recommendation of OHM advisors who had done a drone study for the city of Gross Point Park and looking at future forecasts. I know that was a little off topic, but I just want you to note. Other than that, is there any questions regarding the Marina budget? Councilmember Rayland.
So you mentioned increase in the boat wells cost five percent for three years. Is that three years in a row going to be five percent? So if it's a hundred dollars this year, it'll be a hundred and five next year and then five percent on top of that the next year?
You are correct.
Okay, so that's going to raise three, three years in a row we'll be raising up. But I know we're pretty low on the.
Collectively among the gross points, I think we may be the lowest. But Chad, I'll have to check with Chad. We're either the lowest or the second.
And then this was already, sorry, sorry, Larry, this is already relayed to the boat slip owners?
That is, that is correct, yes. We, we did, we've had this discussion and I know Chris Dalmage and Chad Craig have talked with the park commission and the boat owners.
Awesome, thank you so much.
I think councilmember Fluid had something first, then I'll go to you, councilmember Reed.
Sorry, I hadn't raised my hand yet and sorry, there was a possibility, apparently. But I didn't hear all of councilmember Rayland's question, but that's okay. My question was about the OPEV expense. Is that something that we can typically take out of this type of, out of an enterprise fund?
Well, let me clarify with Finance Director Blayhut on that.
Yes, we could take it out. Yes, we could take it out.
Okay. All right, I mean, I will, I will trust her word on that. I know she knows what she's doing.
Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, thank you. Earlier this year, we had some discussions about upgrades, necessary upgrades at the Marina and in conversation with well holders over there. And I don't see anything specific in the proposed budget for the Marina. Can you address that?
Yes, so I can make some comments. We'll, we'll start back prior to COVID nineteen. So these comments, I know Larry, you and I have shared, councilmember Rayland, councilmember Hodges and others, that there was a great concern with the Marine, state of the Marina, and future projections at that time, that it looked to be some high water levels. We even had discussions that, there were some great resident feedback in areas we could look to address. And we were actually looking to establish a subcommittee of the Parks Commission, like a Marina Subcommittee for recommendation improvements to the administration and Parks and Rec. Now, let's move to March, about March sixteenth, seventeenth, COVID nineteen hit. And so the city's focus kind of changed gears over to COVID nineteen and looking at future reductions and cost-saving measures. And so at this time, that it can put it back a little bit, but we certainly still want to consider and look at it. And so relative to this budget, the actual repairs and or areas that might be needed, I think it's, I'll have to check with Supervisor Craig, but I believe there might be an area on Pier Two we might, might need to increase or, you know, raise up the finger peers. There is some electrical concerns at Pier Four that we've looked into. I know we have talked especially regarding electrical safety is of real importance. I will have, I do not know off top whether it's there or not. I know at least it has been ordered. There is going to be increased electric, warning of electrical shock, including testing of the water by either our harbor master or by Chris Delmage or Marina supervisor to see if there's any electric current in the water. You know, so we just want to ensure safety of our residents of that.
That was one major concern, so I'm happy to hear that.
And, and we're continually looking into even what can we do? I forget the right terminology for this, but when you're leaving the Marina, there's seawall to go out into their, to the river. And you'll note last year, it was difficult for well owners to see that area, and so there was concern. We have been looking into what can we do to provide a safety little beacon or solar powered buoy or whatnot? And that has been something the administration and Marina are looking into at this time and continually evaluating.
Okay, and there, there will be funds in the budget for that, that sort of thing?
That is correct, yes. Yeah, that's actually relatively cheap. Talking with the Marina supervisor, I was surprised. I, I thought it would be a big expense. But it's just finding the right one and getting enough sun and or what, what can we do with our staff to properly and safely go out there to do so?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Our councilmember Rayland.
It just, just to piggyback on Larry's comment about the electrical, the seawall and electrical, the two things. So I didn't, I, what you said, I don't understand if there's money in the budget to, to increase our safety of the electrical issues we're having. That's one of the top resident or boat well owners' concerns is the electrical isn't up to code. Is that correct?
So I guess I would have to evaluate which area that resident is concerned of. I know there's certainly, you know, as part of the problem is the high water levels. You know, that is a challenge which creates part of that would be a, you know, a code violation and or concern. So I would have to, we'd have to talk on a basis to see which individual pier is that, that could be out of compliance. And, you know, we certainly want to do what we can to ensure safety and return to compliance. However, a lot of these things do, they do cost a lot, and we're going to have to really evaluate and look into, you know, can we put a Band-Aid on something, or is it something that we can try and, you know, fix that'll help us for down the road?
Okay, yeah, that's, that was my understanding was, is the safety concern of this electrical, the electrical situation in Marina is really, really outdated? And to stay ahead of it rather than to get behind it, which would be a, a big loss if we had a human loss in that. And it seems like it's at that point now where we, it's really, we're getting lucky that no one's gotten electrocuted out there. And I'm wondering if we should be more proactive in the budget and add some funds in for that? Or can we?
We could.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to say, how do, how do we be proactive about that and add that into this budget? So we do take care of that as soon as we can, because that's, that's more important than a lot of things we're dealing with is the safety of the kids. When the park does open, those kids are going to be everywhere because they haven't been anywhere in months. And to keep them safe, if the water is flooded and it's, go ahead, I know we're going to check for current, but how do we ensure that we have the funds to take care of anything that we find? So I'm, I'm wondering if we add funds in, or can we vote on that later on to add more, like we did last year with the hundred thousand dollars that we had to appropriate to the, to the Marina in March?
Because this is an enterprise fund, really unless you're getting, you know, we can find grants, which we do, the new assistants to the managers assisting me and looking within our Parks Department. I know councilmember Reed and Hodges certainly shared some wellful information too. So please forward anything or any ideas that you may see and or residents are letting you know. I'd be happy to see if there's an opportunity that could be done, even though it is a challenge of a private Marina. You know, let's, let's open, let's turn all stones and see what our options are at this time.
Cool, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments or questions?
I guess I just want to emphasize that point. I mean, the definition of negligence is knowing about something and not doing anything about it. So we're clear that there's a pretty significant potential for health and safety risks. So I want to make sure we're on top of that and doing what's necessary to remedy it because we really can't risk a loss of life or harm to a resident when we had, particularly when we have this knowledge because that clearly is negligence.
Absolutely, and that's why we're taking safety measures now to ensure, you know, we look into the safety of walking on the finger peers and or the water. And, no, absolutely. Thank you for your comment. I'm going to, one second here, I'm going to ask the assistant to the manager, do we have any public comments? Okay, I, I do have two submitted comments to the assistant to the manager, and I'm going to ask her to please read those off for me. One moment, we're fixing technical difficulties.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you, sorry. So the first comment, on page thirty-five of the budget meeting materials, it notes that anticipated parking revenues for twenty twenty-one are the same as pre and post-COVID budgets. The city is not anticipating a decrease in the parking revenue due to COVID. And for twenty twenty, how did the expected revenue for parking violations due June thirtieth exceed the original budget projection given that meters haven't been used in the past couple months? That was submitted by Mr. Martin Steiger. Second written statement. Go ahead, Mayor Dunner, my apologies.
I'm sorry, I was just going to say we should refer that to the administration to follow up on.
We have one more submitted written comment. It's important that the council and public have the opportunity to review these subjects as based on a review of available TIPA slash DDA minutes in my attendance at the last several TIPA meetings. There is very little discussion and no examination of the details of expenditures. This is not surprising as both budgets were approved by council in May thirteenth, twenty nineteen, and presented to TIPA and DDA in little detail for their approval after the fact. DDA on six twenty-six nineteen and TIPA on five twenty-one nineteen. So who is really providing fiscal and staff performance oversight of these bodies? Regarding the DDA budget, funding fifty. Question one, what is the source of the surplus appropriations eighty K being sought? Question two, twenty K worth of legal services being required, including hourly rate and firm? Question three, what exactly is the reason for the uptick in district capital improvement that has almost doubled in the current budget? And what for the hundred and twenty K in the purpose budget? Regarding the TIPA budget funding two fifty-one. Question one, what is the source of the surplus appropriations being sought? Question two, why is the director apparently being given a ten K raise in salary? What is the job description? Staff's performance evaluated on a yearly basis and by whom? Question three, what is the explanation of the director's finance allocation of one ninety-five K in the current fiscal budget, the seventy-four K to date, and the thirty-six K for the proposed budget? Question four, what are the forty-five K worth of legal services being required, including hourly rate and firm? Question five, what exactly are the four twenty-five K in residential improvements being sought? Question six, what exactly are the one seventy-five K in parking improvements being sought? Question seven, what is the reason for the twenty K increase in marketing promotions in the COVID environment? And how exactly is seventy-five K being used? Question eight, what is the installment purchase constant INT that has an allocation of three hundred and twenty-five K? That comment was submitted by Mary, Mary Rulu.
Okay, thank you. Just many of those, I want us administration to take a look and see if there's anything further that needs to be explored for Monday. Were there any, are there any participants in the queue?
My understanding, there is no additional comments at this time.
Okay.
That's correct.
Included the discussion. Got through the detailed discussion of the budget. I'd like to thank the administration for all their hard, hard work and also thank the, the attentiveness of the council in, in the discussion. I think it was a very productive discussion. And hopefully we'll have a productive and fruitful meeting on, on Monday. I did want to, while I've got everybody on the line here, alert you that with the volume of city business that we're trying to catch up on, that we got behind on really starting in March. In addition to Monday's meeting, we're, I've been working with the administration on all, on the various things that we need to address. And I'd like you to plan on me calling a special meeting of the council on Monday, the eighteenth. So I'd like you to put that in your calendar so that it's reserved. As soon as we've got details on that, of course, we'll get, we'll have a specific budget as in any special meeting. It can only be for specific, it will be for a specific set of agenda items. But it looks like Monday's meeting could go very long, and it's likely we're going to need another meeting in order to keep our business on track. So please plan on that date. With that, there's nothing else ready to.
I have, assistant to the manager Smith said, we do have one person that did a raised hand function, they would like to comment. So I will ask Leah Smith to unmute and allow for that comment, and then that's all we have, I think, in the queue.
Hi, this is.
Sorry, Mr. Bosberg, do you want to go ahead?
Let me, let me just, because for verbal comments, I just want to remind whoever participates that the typical rules apply, and in this case, we'd like to ask you to limit your comments to three minutes. Identify yourself and where you live, and then continue with your comments addressed to council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, this is Brian Bosberg, I live on Nottingham Street. And I am, I would just like to comment that I, I appreciate the work there that's gone into this budget. There obviously has been a lot of work that's gone into this. I do question though if the reductions in revenues are sufficient. And do believe that, you know, many other municipalities are projecting much greater losses of revenue from this. And so I would just encourage the city council members and the administration to consider the potential of greater revenue losses in the city's fiscal year. And also, that, that's one comment. The other comment I would have is about the DDA and the TIPA, that there are, I guess, some outstanding questions there that were brought up tonight by councilmembers. And I would encourage them to look into those questions to ensure that things are, one, done appropriately, but two, also budgeted appropriately. That, you know, if things are budgeted for, know that that is a sufficient amount of revenue. Your sufficient amount of funds, I should say, needed for a project. I questioned some of the, the costs in some of those projects that the DDA and TIPA are saying that they're going to be undertaking. And that's coming from someone who does a lot of this work that the DDA and TIPA do professionally for work. Thank you, that's the end of my comments.
Thank you. Are there, is there anyone else in the queue? No.
Okay, so with that, I will adjourn the meet, I'm sorry, some members of council. Councilmember Fluid.
Yeah, can I just clarify how the two emailed questions are going to be addressed for Mr. Steiger and Mr. Rulu?
As with any comments that come to us to council, whether they're verbal or otherwise, we'll generally receive the comment. Make sure we understand it, and then refer the information to the administration for follow-up.
I'll be following up on it.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hodges.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry to delay the meeting. Given my role as councilmember for finance, I did do some additional due diligence and consulted the charter to make sure we were in compliance. And it does appear that due to COVID nineteen, we are out of compliance in terms of just some of the, the relatively minor things. But at the timing that the council was to have received the budget, which would, a draft which would have been by the first meeting in April, and then reporting of the Board of Representatives. So do we need to take, do we need to take any action to remedy that or release us from those requirements so that we're acting in compliance and in good, and, and, and with respect to good management?
I'm going to refer the compliance question to our city attorney and ask him to research that and follow up.
I will, I will do that.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, thank you for your patience. It's been a very long meeting, but I think productive and.
Mayor? Yes. I just want to make a closing comment. I want to make a closing comment. I wanted to thank Nick and Jane and your staff. This is supposed to be my twenty-third or twenty-fourth budget workshop, just an outstanding job. I like how detailed it was and how efficient it was. So I know I speak for the entire council. Thank you very much for all your hard work.
Thank you, Mayor.
And tomorrow is Mr. Robson's fiftieth wedding anniversary.
Oh, my.
Yeah.
Oh, come on.
That's a big one.
It can't possibly be, but I guess it is.
Well, thank, thank you all, and have a good Friday and a good weekend, and I look forward to seeing you all on Monday night. And with that, I'll take, I move that we adjourn this budget workshop. We'll do it by voice acclamation, all in favor. Okay, all, it passes unanimously. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.